Sounds like we are live. Good evening, everyone. I will call to order the May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Almarle County Planning Commission. And I'll begin with saying the opportunities for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Almarle County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Almarle County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters for which comments from the public will be received. With that, I'd like to establish a quorum.
Okay.
Call roll.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Bivins.
Present.
Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Claiborne.
Present.
Mr. Carazana.
Here. Oh, sorry. Always wanted to be the least.
I'm sorry, right over you.
We were on a roll.
He threw that little curveball in there.
Nice.
Mr. Carazana.
Here.
Okay, Ms. Firehawk.
Here as well.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, we will move on to matters not listed on the agenda from the public. Are there any matters from the public that are not listed on tonight's agenda? Including the consent agenda that anyone would like to speak to? All right, seeing none. I will move on to the consent agenda and ask if the commissioners would like to pull any items from the consent agenda, which I believe there is only one. And if not, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Do you have the, any discussion? Vote, please.
Okay, Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Carazana.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Bivins.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And with that, I will open the public hearing and ask for the staff report on our first item, which is ZMA two thousand and twenty-three dash ten, Granger.
Evening Chairman. Sorry. Good evening, Chair Missile and Commissioners. It's been a couple of months since I've seen you all. I got married in March, so.
Yay.
For a public hearing as a married man. But yes, good evening. My name is Kevin McCollum. I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division, Almarle County Community Development, and tonight I'll be giving staff's presentation for the Granger Development rezoning application. To begin with the location, the property is located near the I sixty-four and twenty-nine interchange off of Sunset Avenue Extended on the northern side of sixty-four. It's just to the west of the city of Charlottesville and south of the UVA Fontaine Research Park. Directly across Sunset Avenue Extended from the proposed development is Parkside Eagles Landing condos and Jefferson Ridge Apartment Communities. Redfields is just on the other side of sixty-four. This map is just to show the boundaries of the parcel. It's about sixty-nine acres and zoned R-one residential. Property is bounded by Sunset Avenue Extended, Interstate sixty-four, a railroad track, and two creeks. The two creeks, Moores Creek and Maury Creek bisect the property, and there are a significant number of critical resources on the property, including managed and preserved steep slopes, stream buffers, and floodplain. The site is undeveloped with tree cover and hills. There's also a large electrical easement along the eastern side of the property. The surrounding properties include a budding R-one residential zoned lots to the east, commercial properties to the north across those train tracks, which include the UVA Research Park and the Virginia Department of Forestry. To the southeast, again, across Sunset Avenue Extended, there are apartment communities, including Parkside Eagles Landing and Jefferson Ridge. And then again, to the west, is a Redfields neighborhood, also zoned planned residential development. Here is the comprehensive plan information. The property is within the southern and western neighborhoods as identified in the comprehensive plan. The future land use recommendations are neighborhood density residential, which is shown in yellow on the screen, and green systems shown in green. The neighborhood density residential designation represents residential areas with a desired density of three to six dwelling units per acre. Primary uses include single-family detached, single-family attached, and townhouse units. The Parks and Green System designation represents areas for parks, recreation, environmental preservation, and areas otherwise not intended for development. Land within the Green Systems calculation designation cannot be used to calculate available density. The creeks, floodplain, and preserve slopes on this property make up a majority of what's identified in that Parks and Green Systems layer. Here's the application's proposal. The project proposal is to rezone the entire property from R-one residential to planned residential development. The application plan provided with the application describes a maximum of two hundred and three units in a mixture of housing types to include single-family detached, attached such as townhomes, and multifamily units, including unit types like attached two-over-ones. In addition, fifteen percent of the total units provided will be affordable for rent and for sale units. Vehicular access to the development will be from Sunset Avenue Extended. Pedestrians and cyclists, however, will also be able to travel throughout the site and into the city via provided multi-use pass along Sunset Avenue Extended and connecting through the site to Stribbling Avenue Extended and up towards Fontaine. Over fifty percent of the site will be open, including amenities, amenity areas, green spaces, and also trails. On the screen here is the illustrative plan. So just to clarify, this is not a binding plan, but kind of gives you an idea of how the site will be developed. The proposal shows a mixture of single-family detached lots, attached townhouses, and two-over-one style units. On the screen now is sheet four of the application plan. So since this is a requested planned residential development district, it's a planned zoning district, which means the application plan will be binding should the ZMA be approved by the board. This means that the proposed number of units, locations of roadways, multi-use paths, affordable housing, trails, anything shown on this application plan will be required to be met at the time of subdivision and site plan review. The application plan provides the applicant a little bit of flexibility as it doesn't show exactly the location of individual units, but it does show major features and building envelopes. Tried to zoom in on the screen a little bit here to show some more of the details of the application plan. There is one main entrance into the development along Sunset Avenue Extended that aligns with the Jefferson Ridge Apartments entrance. That thick red line shows the public street network, and the thick blue line is a private street. The tannish area in the middle is the proposed building envelope area where the houses can go. The skittier red dash line along Sunset Avenue Extended is a proposed multi-use pathway that extends along the entire frontage of the property. The orange dash line is a twenty-foot emergency access road that will also serve as a multi-use path. And then there's also a ten-foot asphalt trailway that will cross the creek and connect all the way to Stribbling and Fontaine. The light tan in the northwestern corner of the screen is a private trail network, but becomes public as it gets closer to the creek. So along that creek, the trail system is public. This is sheet six of the application plan that shows trails conditions and a little bit further detail. There are two sections on the left side that provide what the conditions of those trails will be. You can see the two proposed trail types, a Class A and a Class B. The Class B primitive trail is a three-foot wide mulch path trail, whereas the Class A trail is a ten-foot wide asphalt multi-use path for cyclists and pedestrians. This map also shows that the proposed multi-use trails and greenway trails will have public access easements. This means that the public will be able to use all the proposed path and trails shown on the application plan. Everything that's covered in that green hatching will be open to the public. The red hatched area is an area that will be dedicated in the future. The applicant and Almarle County Parks and Rec are still working on language when it comes to that area and reserving it in the future. And staff and the applicant are working together on finalizing the location of that emergency access road in the trails along the eastern portion of the property. There are some existing preserve slopes in that area. We are working on finding an optimal location for all of these improvements that are both functional for users and take into account environmental impacts. And I just wanted to mention that to acknowledge that we're still very much working with the applicant on finalizing some of those details, but the application plan does show the general location of these improvements accurately. Next, I just wanted to try and address some of the impacts that received the most comments and questions. So transportation impacts of this development have been evaluated by transportation planning staff and also Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT. The application includes a traffic impact analysis, and based on the results and staff's analysis, no off-site roadway improvements are warranted or recommended at the buildout of the proposed development. The application proposes one primary entrance to the development from Sunset Avenue Extended, and all the additional roads are internal. A secondary point of access has been provided for fire rescue purposes. This is a twenty-foot asphalt emergency access road, which will serve as a multi-use path for pedestrians and cyclists. This path connects to a ten-foot asphalt trail that will continue through the site across a ten-foot pedestrian bridge crossing the stream and will connect to Stribbling Avenue and lead to Fontaine Avenue. While the application does not propose a Sunset-Fontaine connector road as described in the master plan, these multi-use trails along the property frontage and throughout the site provide significant and safe connections for pedestrians and cyclists. Residents of the proposed neighborhood and members of the public, since the multi-use paths and trails will all be, will all have public access easements, will have safe and inconvenient access to the UVA Research Park and connections to Fontaine and the city of Charlottesville. For environmental impacts, the site development will comply with DEQ and Almarle County requirements for water protection, including water quality and water quantity requirements. A stormwater management plan will be provided with the final site plan for land disturbance. Application Plan Sheet Five is on the screen here and shows a utility and grading plan. The notes on the plan state that water quality and quantity practices will meet state requirements and may include a number of BMP practices such as quality swales, pervious pavers, underground retention, rain gardens, water harvesting, nutrient credits, et cetera. Development has been largely kept out of the critical resources, such as the stream buffer, the floodplain, the preserve slopes, where development does impact these features staff, and the applicant has worked to minimize the impacts. Some impacts are required to access the site and provide needed improvements. And then regarding schools impacts, I'll touch on that in just a second, but nothing has been proposed by the applicant at this time to alleviate any potential school impacts. Based on the anticipated unit type mix, the total number of estimated students is fifty, twenty-four elementary school, ten middle, and sixteen high school. So here are the factors favorable that staff identified. So one, the request is consistent with the land use recommendations of the southern and western neighborhoods master plan. The proposal is for a maximum of two hundred and three residential units, and that's a net density of five point nine eight five dwelling units per acre. So that's consistent with the three to six dwelling units per acre recommendation in the neighborhood density residential area. Second, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan neighborhood model principles. The request provides new transportation improvements consistent with transportation recommendations of the southern and western neighborhoods master plan, including new multi-use paths along Sunset Avenue Extended and through the site connecting Sunset Avenue Extended to Stribbling Avenue and Fontaine Avenue for pedestrians and cyclists. Four, the request provides important public trail connections and future reservation of a public greenway trail. These trails help complete the trail network as shown in the Parks and Green System Plan in the southern and western neighborhoods master plan. And lastly, the request provides fifteen percent affordable housing, which was consistent with the county's affordable housing policy that was in place when this application was received. On the screen here are the factors we found unfavorable. So staff reviewed the impacts to schools based on the existing conditions of the schools within the applicable school districts. It's noted that Mountain View Elementary School is overcapacity, and the development would contribute to overcapacity enrollment. That said, we have been in contact with our schools contacts. We know that there's a new Southern feeder elementary school coming online in the next couple of years. An initial site plan for that project's already actually been approved. And when we followed up with the schools contacts, they said the new school will alleviate current capacity issues at Mountain View Elementary School because the student body will basically be split in half without changing the boundary. In addition, there's also a High School Center Two plan that may also alleviate some student impacts for Monticello High School. The center will be an option for any high school student, but it's hard to say exactly how many students would go to that school. So all this is to say that, yes, our one factor unfavorable is school impacts, but again, there are two planned schools coming online in the near future that may alleviate some of those potential capacity impacts caused by this development. So that concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending approval of this rezoning application, ZMA two thousand and twenty-three ten, Granger Development. And now I'll take questions, and I also have slides on my last slide. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. McCollum, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I will ask the commission if you have any questions for staff. I'll start with Commissioner Firehawk.
Yeah. I just, can you, do you know what the reserved area is, the five plus or minus acres?
On the northern side of the creek?
I didn't understand that.
Yeah, basically, the applicant is kind of leading that up to future development. They propose a maximum of two units, but if they develop all two hundred and three units on the southern side of the creek, they won't have the ability to develop that. So there's been a lot of discussion on, you know, whether that can be a future park or some sort of open space. They kind of reserve the option to be able to build two units. There's that existing crossing of the, of the stream there. There used to be a house on that side of the property. It's no longer there. It's been torn down. But that crossing of the creek is where the old driveway used to be. So my understanding is that, you know, they just want to leave the option open to potentially develop, you know, two or so houses on that side of the creek.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carazana?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. It was quite thorough. Actually, you answered a lot of my questions. But I, so I just wanted to clarify the stormwater management strategy that you kind of highlighted a few bullet points, and you mentioned underground retention, but you didn't mention any kind of bio swales or ponds. Are they not planning on any kind of, so everything is underground?
Yeah, I mean, the, the notes on the application plan kind of leave it, you know, up to their future design. There's a lot of options available. I think the applicant can maybe touch on that further. You know, we will get a stormwater management plan with the final, or with the site plan. We'll review that at that time, but.
Thank you.
Commissioner Claiborne?
No questions for staff.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, I'm looking through my, through the county code on the determination of managed versus preserved slopes. I was confused as to why those slopes, if you can flip back to the plan there, there's a series of, of orange slopes that are clearly associated with the stream right there that the road is going right through that are classified as managed when they, they look like they should be natural slopes, sorry, preserve slopes. So could you explain why those are managed, not preserved?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Commissioner Murray, and I appreciate you sending that early so staff could have a chance to look into that. I spoke with engineering staff, another planning staff, and basically what engineering found was that, you know, they reviewed that area, given our GIS maps and the maps that are available online to them, and found that that was intermittent. If it is a stream, it's an intermittent stream. Stream buffers only apply to perennial streams. And based on the information that they had, there was no evidence that there was a perennial stream there. The slopes were zoned as managed slopes when the board adopted the preserved slopes overlay district in two thousand and fourteen. And my understanding is that there was, you know, a reason for classifying them as managed and not preserved. They, you know, they might have more characteristics of managed slopes or or not, you know, a continuous area of, of slopes. So they were basically established as managed slopes at that time and can be developed, you know, with the by right uses identified in the ordinance for managed slopes.
So my understanding, having been around when those, those were passed and those discussions were had, when the promises was made to the environmental community at that time was that this was just a preliminary map and that there would be site truthing of those, and we wouldn't just accept the GIS algorithm as to what was going to be preserved and managed. And looking here in our ordinance, as it's currently written, there's, it just says associated with water. It doesn't say specifically that intermittent streams are exempt from preserved slopes. So the way it's written, it would, it would say that, that a stream of any kind, intermittent or perennial, would still classify it as a, a preserved slope. But I mean, if I could ask the county attorney maybe to weigh in.
I'm not familiar with this issue. I need to look into it to give you a more definite answer.
Commissioner Murray, we, you know, we reached out to Frank Paul, the county engineer, and he said that, you know, if there are concerns, we can certainly look into that. Staff can investigate and have the applicant also, you know, investigate if there's an existing stream or channel there. We can follow up on that.
Okay. Thanks. Commissioner Bivins?
Thank you, Chair. So I have a sort of a housekeeping question for you. Do you, could, is there, I couldn't figure out which portion was in Jack Jewett. So whether or not I should be really sort of concerned, or I only have a four percent concern level?
Yeah, the Magisterio districts follow the, I don't have the Magisterio district map on, up, but it follows the same as the school districts map here. It's that northern portion is the Magisterio district line.
Okay. We wouldn't go, I don't think any of our, our children would go to Western, so I'll, I'll leave that for another discussion. But I would, will share with, with the commission. I, by chance, was at a CAC meeting last night and had a presentation from the school, from Kate Alcock, Alcock, about the schools. And so just to alleviate the question about schools on this one. So there's two schools that are going to come on board August twenty-sixth, if everything goes all right. And one of them is the one that's down there in Mountain View. And while I believe the, the developer is a, is a platinum developer, I doubt that they're going to have this up and running by August two thousand and twenty-six. And so I don't believe as far as one school is concerned that this project will cause any pinch points for, for, for schools, given what I learned last night. And then if you're wondering, and so that you understand, they're also going to split the schools apart. So they're going to have a lower elementary school and an upper elementary school. So I believe on that point that the applicant has got a green light. And then on the other piece of it, I know we've talked about this before. And Center Two, which is going to be on the Land Lane campus, I understand from the meeting last night that that could handle four to six hundred students a day. So this project is not going to have an impact on that part of our, our, our academic community. So I just wanted to put that out there now so that we can not have to hear, oh, my kids are going to be in the cloak closet, when people, that's, you know, the cloak closet excuse. The one question that I did have is that this is a, this is probably one of the most challenging sites I've seen in Almarle County. And it has a bunch of things there. It's got those high intention, those high tension lines, and it's got the ballards, and it's got all kinds of stuff there that I will ask the applicant about later on. But it seems to me that having one way out for two hundred and three residents is a bit, while it may be appropriate, may, well, it may meet VDOT standards. From a cautionary standpoint, I would like us to have some further conversation about having an additional entrance there in case something goes wrong, because there's a lot of things up in the air that could go wrong, considering the high tension lines that will run across the property. And so that was one of the things that I was, that was severely concerned with. The rest of it, I'm waiting to hear how the applicant is going to turn this into a premier development in Almarle County.
Thank you, Commissioner Bivins. Commissioner Moore?
I had a question, just sort of for my own identification, about mostly public streets, but then one private street, and what, what's permitted on a private street, or why, why do that route rather than just all public streets within this development?
Yeah, my understanding is that they needed to request a, a private street for that road because they were planning to do perpendicular on-street parking. VDOT would permit parallel parking on-street but not perpendicular. The idea there is to have two-over-one units, and so it's easier to have kind of, you know, parking lot-style parking instead of, you know, parking on individual lots. So it's easier to have more parking spaces that are shared and on the street than it would be to have, you know, on individual lots.
True. I thought that might be the answer. Also was curious about the, the density and sort of, why not have more density on this particular parcel of fairly large amount of acreage and a pretty big chunk of it that's just called reserved?
Yeah, I mean, the applicant is maximizing based on, you know, comprehensive plan recommendations, the amount of acreage that they have. So they, the, the recommendations are three to six dwelling units per acre, and they're proposing five point nine nine. They did, in their calculations, use the, if I go back to the comp plan map, they counted all the acreage that's shown in yellow. So all the acreage, even on the northern side of the creek, they counted it, you know, towards the amount of usable acreage that they're permitted to use in that calculation. So that's how they got to the two hundred and three.
Yeah, I noticed it was very close to six units per, per acre net. And I just want to reiterate something I've said during our current comprehensive plan conversations that I don't think we should have neighborhood density residential anymore with the housing crisis going on. We're not just going to build our way out of it, but if we don't start with missing middle, we're never going to build our way out of it, even as one of the options and tools in our toolkit.
Great, thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. Great staff report, really thorough. Thank you. One is on page six of the application plan. It refers a couple of times to, let's see, location of public access and maintenance easement, and says to be dedicated to the county. I don't think you mentioned this. You may have. Is the county planning to maintain that then? Sort of given, since it's going to be a maintenance easement?
Yes, I believe so. We're, we're still kind of working with them on the timing of that, but my understanding is that Parks and Recreation will be maintaining it since we're getting that public access easement.
Got it, okay. And related to that, are you aware of a timing issue or a development density issue that would trigger the trails?
Yeah, that's another, one of the elements of the plan that we're going to continue to work with the applicant on. Are you referring to the, the note that says after the hundred and fifty building permit? Yeah, that's something we're going to continue to work on. I think, I think there's kind of two components. There's the access easement component that will be approved with the subdivision plan. And then there's the actual dedication of the land to the county, which I think will occur later. And I think that note's referring to, you know, the later dedication of the land, whereas the easement will be in place from the beginning. So I think public will have access from the beginning. It's just the actual dedication of the land will come later.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
Let, let the applicant, you know, clarify that if I misspoke there.
Yes, okay, great. Any other questions from the commission?
Could I ask one, please?
Yes, sir.
So do we have a sense that this is not, it is about this, but it's not about this? Did we pass the new regs on affordable housing? So it's now, it's now higher and?
Yeah, yeah, yes, that went into, adopted by the board in March, but because this application came in before that, it's, we talked with Stacy Pethia, the Housing Director, and she basically said that we're going to apply the previous policy to things that have been under review. So the twenty percent will come.
So that's why we have twenty percent?
Fifty percent.
Excuse me, I'm hoping for twenty percent. That's why we have fifteen percent.
Correct, correct.
And do we know if this is rental or for purchase?
They have the option for both.
For both, okay. Well, maybe, maybe the applicant will give me more clarity on that.
Can I just clarify one thing on the affordable housing? Is it, is it that we have, we are now requiring twenty percent of the units at sixty percent AMI? Or have we essentially said if the applicant chooses to go that route, they then can apply for incentives?
I believe that is the case, that if they wanted to voluntarily enter the program, they could.
So it's a voluntary bump to twenty percent. We're still at fifteen percent.
For ones that aren't like required, I mean, for this particular one, they're still under the fifteen as a grandfather. If they wanted to enter into twenty percent of the site and take advantage of some. 20% of the site and, and take advantage of some of the tax stuff, I believe that Stacy said that that would be permissible, but that it's not our intent to require that because it's basically grandfathered.
Okay.
For, I was wondering if your question, like if somebody applied today?
Yeah, yeah. If someone applies.
Oh, thank you.
My understanding is it's still 15%, but they can voluntarily apply to the 20% initiatives, the incentive program.
I believe the policy is 20%. So on rezoning applications, we will want to see 20%. But there are also incentives in place to, I, I think, offset the cost of that to the developer.
Okay, that's different than what I understood. Thank you. Okay, great. No more questions for the commission. I will open the public hearing and ask for the applicant's report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So nice to see you, commissioners and Chair Missel.
Thank you. As a reminder, you have 10 minutes.
Thanks, great. My name's Ashley Davies. I'm with Riverbend Development. Tonight I'm joined by Alan Taylor, also with Riverbend, and Chuck Rapp from our engineering team. I'm sure many of you know Chuck. And then also joining us through the hybrid meeting is Carl Holkren, our transportation analyst. So wonderful. Yeah, so you may or may not know, but our company has actually owned this site for 16 years. And so this is a pretty big evening for us to finally be before you. We have looked at countless iterations of the design of the site and what should be included here. And so it really is wonderful. We feel like we have struck a really nice balance among the various goals of the comprehensive plan and providing an appropriate density of housing while also preserving environmental features and great trail systems. So throughout this presentation, the images you'll see were taken on-site last week. So for those of you that haven't had the chance to walk the site, this will give you a sense of some of the really lovely green spaces and plant communities on the site. So the main topics for tonight, Mr. Bivens hit on a big one. This site has many, many constraints and that's why it's taken us a while to get here before you. We're going to look at the neighborhood that we're creating. I think we've already hit on the schools issue, so I can skip over those slides. And then we're going to kind of zoom out and look at the site as a hub within both the city and the county and as a true connector site. So lots of great opportunities there. And thank you to staff, by the way, for providing such a great report. It makes my job a lot easier. So yeah, so at first glance, you can see that there are many constraints. If you look at the, the image to your left, you can immediately see the creeks, so Moors Creek and Maury Creek, as well as some other tributaries pass through the site, dividing it into two different sections. There's also the areas in green are all of those preserved slopes that go along with the stream bank there. So that's pretty vast area of the site. We do have the hard edges of Interstate 64 as well as the railroad tracks. So that really limits where we might access the site. And then we also have a large transmission line, electric utility easement that's running north-south on the site. So you know, the, that makes it really challenging in what you do with the site and how you utilize it. But I, I think the great part is that it begins to really show you those areas that you can really create the new neighborhood and then also have areas that you really just stay away. I, I call them the no-fly zone. So in the end, I think it, it actually serves as a huge benefit to the site. This slide just gives you some imagery of the various streams, some of those slope areas and the railroad, as well as giving you an idea of the scale of those transmission lines, as well as the width of that run through the site. It's pretty, pretty significant. So what that leaves us with is a site that is 54% open space, which I think is quite unusual. And then the rest of it, we're actually just containing, you know, a vast majority of the development in that 25 acre section. And then the six acre section on top, we did reserve it for potentially one to two units up there. But we really are focusing the development on the southern side. And what that allows us to do is really not impact some of those important environmental areas. The, the northern slopes that go along the creek there, and they have really beautiful plant communities of mountain laurels and all kinds of great stuff. So we're happy to preserve those. So that allows us to cluster the neighborhood with a variety of unit types from single-family to different attached unit styles, as well as build affordable housing on-site that's in close proximity to the city and the university. And we did keep it at this density because that's both what the comprehensive plan supports, but it's also what the existing transportation infrastructure supports right now. So we don't want to overload that. We've already touched on the schools, so I will leave that where it is unless you have other questions. But one of the really exciting pieces about this site, often when we're looking at rezonings, we're really just looking at the site context, but it's great to pan out and see a site as it relates to other, other areas. And what we found with the Granger property, there's already the existing Ryvanna Trails network that passes through it. That's the blue dots up on your screen. So that will be within easement and for public use. But we also, in pink, that is, on the site at least, that is our 10-foot Class A shared use path that provides opportunities for the future. We don't have control over those areas outside of our site, but we think now is the time to provide our portion of those trail networks so we can build upon them in the future. And that is also inclusive of connections that, you know, potentially get you all the way down to Biscuit Run Park, but also over to the Sieg property and the future Hedro Park. So that's really exciting to think about. And then, yeah, so this one just gives you, we looked at that before, but it gives you a sense for the extent of both the trails and the areas that will go in easement for public access and maintenance. Right now, this is the existing crossing across Moors Creek for the Ryvanna Trail. And if any of you have been on-site and walked that trail, it's, can be quite an adventure to get across there. And many days you can't get across at all. So one of the really great features that you can't necessarily visualize on our application plan is our proposed creek crossing that will be a part of that overall Class A shared use path. Now, this, this one shown in the picture is not a 10-foot wide. This is the one that goes over to the Lachlan neighborhood in the city and the county. But sorry, it goes over to the city portion of the neighborhood, but ours will actually be a 10-foot wide bridge that matches the path. So anybody walking or biking will easily be able to cross the creek and get right into the city there. So those are, yeah, we, you know, those are my main points. We're just very excited about the opportunity to provide a new neighborhood in this location. We think it's incredibly special, both in the natural environment that people will have access to, the natural environment that gets preserved, but also just, yeah, it's just a key location and so, so close to lots of great work opportunities and amenities. So we're glad to finally be before you and certainly happy to answer any questions regarding housing or stormwater that have come up already and whatever else you'd like to discuss tonight. So thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Great. Any questions from the commission? I'll start with Commissioner Moore.
I had a question and actually kind of echoing something Commissioner Bivens asked about the 20-foot wide emergency road on the east side of the parcel there. Is that one to be blocked by ballards or, or just kind of there and available for, for cars who need to get out that way?
Get that to the slide. Yes, so that is an emergency access and typically those do have ballards that would allow people who are biking and walking to utilize it at any time. And then the ballards would come up if it's needed for emergency access.
And I see a, a, a really lovely looking, a, a multi-use trail up to Stribling. I was just curious why just a bike and ped rather than a, a car connection to the north?
Sure. So basically it boils down to the fact that we, I mean, you've seen the, sorry, my third just went. We had, we did look at different auto connections and it's really is so damaging to the sensitive areas of the site and you're not getting a huge benefit to that. So even if you get across with an auto connection, both the Stribling Avenue extended by the power, the power sub-plant and the area going along the research park. Those roads are not improved. You know, you can traverse them barely, but they're not great for a lot of auto trips. And so the environmental damage that it would do just didn't seem like a feasible option for us.
And then the other question I had, oh, and this is also one that Commissioner Bivens brought up is a question I had as well, as far as plans for home sales versus rentals, had gotten that far yet, as far as what the plan might be once these are all built.
That's a great question. So we, we tend to do a variety. Greenwood Homes is our home building company that will be working on site. Let me grab my water.
Yeah, sure.
Still getting through the pollen. Thank you. Yeah, so at this stage, we like to keep it open to both options because in some ways, it's, I think it's great to have a variety of both homeownership opportunities and rental opportunities. And we also don't know what the market's going to do coming up, but you know, we are really proud of the fact that we are building affordable units in Albemarle and throughout the city. So, you know, in the past, a lot of people would just pay into an affordable housing fund and you never see those units coming online. So we think it's really exciting to start seeing them coming online and we fully agree with you. We're in the midst of a crisis. You know, the first quarter of this year versus last year, I just read that the median sales price in Albemarle went up 15%. So it's really scary, quite frankly. So we're glad to be part of that solution.
I ask also on that, and this might be a question somewhat for staff to riff on it, but we heard last November, was it, when we all got together up at North Fork, that, you know, affordable rental units do tend to get picked up pretty quickly because people are looking and affordable homes for sale often just don't get sold because the, the connecting with the buyers often just doesn't happen. I was wondering if we had any better systems in place or in the works yet? As far as when affordable homes for sale in our criteria do come online?
I'll be honest with you, Commissioner Moore, I don't have the specifics for that. I do know, I was talking with some of the housing folks that are just last week, and I think that, and I know that they recognize that as a problem and trying to work towards solutions on it.
Okay. Thanks. That's all the questions I got right now.
Great, thanks. Commissioner Bivens?
Good to see you this evening. So you know, I'm going to give you a hard time on a couple of things. You just should know that coming into this. But so I'm going to carry on with my colleague here. So I'm concerned about natural disasters and bad driving and virtually a landlocked piece of property. The natural disasters I'm thinking about hearken back to the failure of high tension, an electric high tension that catch on fire and then burn. And I've only got one way to get 203 people out of here unless somebody has the key to use the ballards. The other one is, as we know, on 64, there have been lots of poor drivers, truck drivers, who have had accidents recently and they've spilled their loads on the side of the road. You've got 64 as one of your boundaries. I will even go to the next one is, while I know the Commonwealth of Virginia owns the rail lines now, they're not the only ones that use it. And we also know that we've seen higher, a, a higher frequency of train incidents. Where they spill their loads. And so that wonderful site there has got three things that gave me pause. It has a possibility for a high tension failure, which would cause fire with all the greenery there. It's got a, it's got a train tracks as one of the boundaries. Hopefully no train ever derails. And then we've got 64 on the other side going up, coming down and going up to Afton. And so there's also the possibility of just bad drivers. And so as you're thinking this through, I know you're not there yet, but as you're thinking this through, I think you would give your community a bit more of a sigh of relief if they had a secondary way to get out of there instead of the, the way that you have in there. I'm just going to give you that. You don't have to respond to me. I will ask you to respond on this, though. On the, the road that you're asking to be a private road, what will happen if you sell them? So the private road right now is in the smallest units, will be packed, be go through the smallest units. And if I were living there and by HOA said that I had to pay for snow removal on the private road, I would be really annoyed. Since my street's a public street and VDOT, when it gets to us, will take the snow away. Or if VDOT comes to us, they'll put, they'll clean the potholes out. How will that get distributed around, among the part of the community that's got the smallest units in it? And the rest of the community that's going to have lovely units. It's going to be, no, they're going to be lovely units because you don't design anything. I'll get to that. But how are you going to deal with that? Because that's a concern since you, if it goes to an HOA, someone's going to pay to maintain that part of the, that, that part of the property.
Sure. Well, first off, I want to just say you took us to a very dark place there.
That's where I live.
Sounds like a good movie plot.
That's why I had me on the, on the planning commission. That's my role.
So Alan may want to take this one, but you know, we, we, most definitely this will be part of, the neighborhood will have an HOA. All of our neighborhoods do. And my, my guess is that everyone will just pay an HOA fee and every single thing about the neighborhood is just going to be included in that fee inclusive of the private road. If you want to live in that community, you just pay.
You'll create, you'll create a reserve for that kind of thing, which is what I would, which is what I would offer up to you.
Absolutely, versus, yeah.
And I'll let, I'll let, I'll let your team wrestle with my dark place about disasters or us. Which they do, they do occur. So, you know, I need to say that. I just need to say that. You showed us some images which sort of look like your, your project up 29 North. And I would just challenge you, this is a really sweet location. You know, it's got all the problems you could possibly have with it. Don't make it look like a garden apartment complex. Make it something special. You've got good designers at your hand. You've got really creative people who live there. You know, if you could put a biosphere there, that would be really cool. And I know my colleague at the end of, at the end would really like that. Do something cool there. Don't just make it like another garden apartment community, please.
Great. Commissioner Murray?
Thank you.
So as I was wondering, you know, in terms of the environmental constraints that you already have, and so you're, you're dealing with a very small, a lot of constraints here. I was just wondering, did you consider apartments or maybe going a little bit higher or something a little bit more compact to make better use of that limited space?
So we have done designs on the site that included apartments. I will say, I think that they were at a higher density than what we're currently showing. And as I mentioned, we are trying to be sensitive to the surrounding areas and make sure that we're not overburdening the road system. So we did look at that quite carefully. But yeah, I think at the end of the day, after we, I mean, we literally have probably made 50 designs for the site. And at the end of the day, we felt like this was the best combination, giving a variety of unit types and homeownership possibilities in this location close to the city. But we definitely considered it.
Another question, I, I see on your, your plan, on the illustrated plan, there's these two little green triangles. I assume there's, there's going to be sort of pocket parks, internal amenity. And so one, one of the things that one of the things that I think is a possibility for spaces like that is you can use them as both green spaces and biofilters. So that, that's one thing I would encourage you to, to look at, but also I would just, you know, wonder, you know, we have a lot of people that come forward, you know, and, and they propose to do the bare minimum to meet their stormwater requirements. And that's fine. They're allowed to do that. And this is not a site plan process. But are there anything that you're going to be doing besides the, the generous green space that go above and beyond in terms of managing stormwater and making this a low impact?
I'm so glad you asked that and I'm gonna get Chuck up here to address that question. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chuck Rapp, Conns Engineering. Great question. It's the one we've been talking about. And we, we do have a variety of measures that we're looking into for stormwater on this one. First, I would say, I, I believe we're headed down around where we'll have several localized bio retention facilities to capture some of the water more immediately adjacent to those homes. And then we have, we are proposing, as Mr. McCollum stated, an underground retention system further down that would capture the larger quantities there and release those and, and treat them. The reason for doing so was to limit our footprint as well. So by, by having some, a couple of smaller localized facilities and then that underground facility allows us to, it really helps us to disturb less of that slope. And we looked at some other options, some more traditional routes, but it really creates a larger footprint of disturbance to kind of put those in. And so with that, I mean, plus the fact that we are preserving over 50% of the site is, is a big step towards meeting stormwater requirements as well. And so the combination of multiple approaches like that is, is how we intend to, to address stormwater on the site.
Thanks.
Sure.
Christopher? So it's like a, a good project. I have a couple of questions here. I usually ask the same questions every time. So you probably know what's coming. Can you tell us a little bit about where the affordable housing will be placed on the site? What, what part that we're looking at here? Where do you anticipate affordable housing being placed?
So it's going to be kind of in that central zone where you see the variety of attached units.
Okay. One of the things that, you know, I've always says, we want to make sure that there's not a zone of affordable housing, right? Like you shouldn't be able to tell how much money someone makes by, you know, this plan here, right? And so just encourage us to, looking at ways to disperse it throughout the site. Second question would be around sustainability and, you know, you've talked a lot about the site piece. I was wondering if you could maybe share about the building piece and maybe how this could be a model of great development for others to, to follow. Right? So what can we look forward to?
Yeah. Yeah. And I wish Chris Schooli were here. Alan may be able to speak to it better, but like I said, Greenwood Homes will be constructing all of the buildings on site. And I know that they really strive not only towards sustainability in their construction and really tight unit types and meeting energy standards. But they also focus on the aspects of how can you have a unit where you age in place and visitability be, visit, visitability. And so I don't know if there were other aspects that you wanted us to hit on, but they definitely focus on that in their construction, really high quality units with, with tight construction.
And then, thank you. And maybe a comment for staff, not sure if this is like a procedural thing, but it'd be nice to have, we know that's like the vision of the board of supervisors, like equity and sustainability. It'd be nice if that was like a requirement in the narrative somewhere, just to start to address it because rarely do we see anything about it in these proposals. And so that, that might be helpful, something to talk about offline. But last comment I had, I guess it's around the two play areas or the, the common spaces. And you're probably doing everything you can. It's a, it's a challenging site. I realize that. With 50 kids being projected perhaps to, to live in this neighborhood, I just found it a little surprising that there's like four tentacles a road bisecting the, the only green space in the project, you know, for vehicles. And so that's something to look at. I know you're doing probably the best you can with that, but that was just a, a flag that was raised. So with 50 kids in the neighborhood.
I think that's a good point. We wanted for the neighborhood amenity space to be centralized to the units. And we find that for parents, they really like that. And you can have a lot of eyes on the play space. And then, you know, the other component is the 37 acres of green space that probably offer a lot more opportunities that we can be playful with, I'd say. I mean, we, in our Glenbrook communities on the trails, you know, I think that there are various opportunities within those more forested spaces for other types of play as well. So.
Yeah. Thank you. And you will not live in similar neighborhoods. People just drive too fast. And then that's at the end of the day.
I agree.
You know, they'll drive 35 mile an hour through there and kids playing everywhere. So.
Absolutely.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner Carazana.
Thank you. And I was glad to hear Mr. Rapp say that there will be bioswales or bio retention incorporated as well as underground. I, I think they can provide some, some very nice landscape amenities as well as dealing with, with the with the stormwater. Staff mentioned pervious pavers, I believe. Did I mishear that?
Yeah, it's listed on the application plan as being just one of the options that they could.
So where would those go if you?
Typically, if we utilize pervious paver, pavers, that's in the parking areas. So not like in a travelway, but in a parking zone. So that could be utilized, for example, on the private road for the, that perpendicular parking. Could be a strategy.
Okay. And then your reserved area, that could be a great place for Mr. Vivins biosphere.
Yeah, I need to hear more about this.
Which may not do much for stormwater, but maybe it could.
Fabulous.
Commissioner Firehawk?
Sure. Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment on the bioswale. So the bios, most of the pollution, the runoff oily materials and such is in the first inch of rainfall, which the most bioswales are designed to capture. After that, the roads are relatively clean and then the excess flow would go into those underground storage tanks. So, so they're, they're getting the quality, hopefully mostly through those bioswales and then the overflow, because we do get some ridiculous rainfall around here. And I would say, I'll, I'll just say that at 50% open space, this does qualify as a conservation subdivision. So I would market it as such. I think, yeah, I wrote a book on conservation subdivisions and I would give you, I'm going to, I have my students evaluate them. So hurry up and finish this and then we can evaluate it. But I, I did, I had also suggested when we went on our walk, and I know you, you're not like, this is not the final plan. It's just conceptual. But if you live at like, say, the end of that, that cul-de-sac and you want to go visit your neighbor, like who lives in the townhouses on the other side, you have to go all the way up the street. So what I'm, what I'm getting at is interconnectivity for pedestrians within the site. And I know that you've got some topography there. I can read a topo, but you could, you could put some skinny pedestrian based trails. You know, it doesn't have to be a 10 foot wide asphalt path, but you could put something that's four feet wide that little Johnny or Julie could go from that street and go perpendicular across. It would be relatively easy to skinny a trail so that you have some mid-block breaks that would allow people to just walk between the neighborhood. Or if I'm living way over on the western side, I don't have to go so far to get to the trail. So anyway, just thinking about some green fingers in between some of these to break up that, that monolith of buildings going down the street and then allow people to go back and forth. Cause sure, you cannot effectuate a grid pattern in this topography, but you could create some things for pedestrians. So that was really my main comment. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty pleased with this. I, I wish your 10 foot, sorry, I'm still loud. Your 10 foot wide path was maybe a little skinnier, like five feet. I, I understand you're doing whatever the class A was or whatever. I can't remember the different classes, but I like to see skinny trails, especially in sensitive environments. And you can have pullover areas. So if a, a stroller and a bicycle are both coming, one can move to the side rather than having a super wide path just because of the creek and the topography and the sensitivity of the, of the site. But I mean, I, I feel like this was a, an excellent effort to, to almost shoehorn in as much as you could while being really respectful of the topography and the ability to get on trails and keep going and dedicate land to the county. So I, I'm pleased to see this. I, I think it's very respectful of the terrain. And I'd love to live there, but I already got a house. So thank you. Good job.
Great. Thank you. I only have one question and it relates back to that 150th unit for, I guess before the issuance of the public access. Could you explain that a little bit more clearly in terms of what your intention is?
Sure, sure. Yes. And so as we are developing the site plan and the subdivision plots with the county, all of those trails and areas, as Mr. McCollum noted, like those all get included, the location included as we get into the specifics of the plan. And then when we do the plotting, that's when all the easements go in. And then the way we typically in terms of, so in terms of installation of trails, we would typically be doing that when we're out doing the rest of the site work. And so very early on in the development process, we do like in the actual rezoning to give ourselves some a little, you know, some wiggle room on the completion of those trails because there's always different things that come up or they may not, you know, we may get something in and it may not be, you know, we may have to like work on it with the county and go back and forth a little bit to make sure it's exactly as they wanted it. So in terms of like the rezoning, that kind of gives us, you know, some flexibility on when it's like finally completed and we're not holding up home sales. But in terms of, you know, everything that we're showing here, we like to get it in as early as possible because once you start having homeowners in place, they don't like you going in and, you know, you know, everything becomes their yard at that point. They don't want you to go in and mess around or have to knock down trees when you're putting in a trail system or anything like that. So yeah, I, I don't know. You may be able to speak more in terms of when the county wants to accept easements, but we'll be, we put them all on the plots when we're creating the plots and the, the site plan.
So if I could summarize what I think I heard you say, number one, your intention is to deliver the trails and the public access as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
That's a selling point for your community and those who live there would expect it. Number two, you want to provide flexibility. So you're not ready to say, we're going to do that day one because you don't want to hold up the issuance of a CO related to your first or 10th. And number three, the 150 sounds arbitrary. Is that right? Sort of a, just kind of pulled it out and thought, eh, that seems reasonable. That will give us enough, enough flexibility. So that's a, a large portion of the 203.
Right.
I'm wondering if there is any interest in reducing that 150 to show that your intention is to deliver them sooner, but also give yourself flexibility somewhere below the 150 number.
Well, and one thing I discussed with Mr. Krebs when we were talking about the issue was, I mean, what, why don't we, because there was a concern, like what if you never get to the 150th unit, Rich? That's not really the way we operate as a company or we wouldn't still be here. But I was like, well, what if we split the difference and said 75?
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
I do. It's not a question, but I want to, I want to tag on with Commissioner Firehawk. And encourage you to really think about your edges. And I know people are going to say, oh, that's my yard. That's my yard. You can't do anything with my yard. But when you look at, when you look at the project from, from, from sort of a bird's view, the integration of green paths on the outside and inside to be able to move people even just across the other 50, 50.
Sorry.
I thought I did that. I was going to say.
Trying to get to one. I like this one better because it, it's actually more accurate. It shows the trail system coming up to the end of that cul-de-sac, which was a recent change
Right.
that we made. So sorry to take you off track.
No, it's helpful because I think really what, what will be so, so brilliant about this site is the fact that people will feel as if they're in this very special place. And so soften your edges so that 50% of the, of the preserved green space actually gets brought into the design of the space. So it doesn't feel like I just sort of plopped development in the middle of the forest and I can't get to it. So I, I think what Commissioner Firehawk is on is, is, is really quite smart as you're designing this to be, to be intentional. And then that probably will get to Commissioner Missles' piece because as you become intentional about integrating that green space, you're going to push yourselves to say, yes, let's, let's open up these, these trails. Because that's also a way that you sort of sing your glory to the community. And just sort of thinking, how do you, you're, 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 you're one of the premier companies in our community. Do something grand.
I love it. Thank you.
Something grand.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay. If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You'll have an opportunity to come back after we open it up for public comment. With that, I'll open it up to public comment for those attending in person who have signed up on this list. And I'll just remind everyone, the speaker is allotted three minutes. Individuals cannot relinquish their three minutes to another speaker. Individuals can only sign up one person to speak. And please give any written statements that you might have to the clerk. The first and only name on this list is Mary King.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. Thank you, friend.
Just speaker, mention your name and general location of residence.
Absolutely. I'm Mary Catherine King. I live in the Oak Hill Farm neighborhood, which is just on the other side of the Red Fields neighborhood. I also sent you all an email with most of my comments yesterday, but I do have a few additional ones that I wanted to add tonight. I also want to say that I am the chair of the Fifth and Eight Bond Community Advisor Committee. So I was there for the community meeting. And I share a little bit of the concerns of our committee as a whole, but obviously don't speak for everyone. Additionally, I have a civil engineering degree from the University of Virginia. And I am a Realtor, so I understand real estate and land and a little bit about land development. I have also studied the schools with a lot of developments that have come through with us. And I mentioned this in my letter, but I want to just make sure that I highlight it because I'm not concerned about students in a closet, but I am concerned that our overall, the overall way that we look and count for students and new developments in the county is flawed. And it has been talked about over and over and over again for three years at our CAC. I don't know if it's talked about at other CACs, but I gave a really good example that in our neighborhood, Oak Hill Farm, we have 85 homes and we have approximately 75 school age children. This neighborhood has a proposed development of 200 units and they're saying that their maximum total would be 45. So I can just give you that real world example of how as all the developments are coming through in the whole county as a whole, this same school modifier is being applied. I also believe that the last time the schools came and talked with us, they said that the new schools new schools, both the Southern Feeder and the new Albemarle campus are going to meet current over capacity standards. And so I don't think that includes future new developments, but I could be wrong. That was my understanding the last time they came and talked to our CAC. I'm, I'm confused about the, the comprehensive plan and whether there is still an opportunity to put a road, a vehicle connection through here. Is that still available as a future option? Is that something we want as a county? Has it, is it going to be eliminated by this? I do think, you know, there, I don't want this to be another Eastern Avenue where the developer sells the homes telling people there will be one and then it's not done because it was too expensive and we didn't know that upfront. Those are some of the things that I think about, sorry. And then lastly, because I'm going to be honest, I have one, two seconds. Affordable housing is really important, but supplying market rate housing in this development is also really important. And so.
Finish, you're good.
Okay, thank you. And so I'm a believer, some of you might have heard, that inclusionary zoning, which is what we're doing here, doesn't really provide affordable units. What I think provides affordable units is allowing this developer to sell market rate units at a higher price point to people who are currently buying lower rate units because there's nothing else available in the county, right? So you've got to supply housing at all levels. And when you do that, you then allow this developer to properly fund the transportation between Sunset Avenue Extended all the way out to Old Lynchburg Road, which is a problem. A huge problem.
Great, thank you. I have no one else on my signup list, but is there anyone else here that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Come up and if you could state your name and general location of residence, you'll have three minutes to speak. And when the light turns yellow, please conclude your comments and appreciate you coming.
Robert Wingfield.
Okay, could you please speak into?
Robert Wingfield, I live at 700 Sunset Avenue Extended. Everything sounds great and beautiful for what I've heard tonight, except for the fact that one thing I haven't heard is how it affects the local residents that are currently on Sunset Avenue. One thing that I have a concern for, what little information we have that about the site plan, site plan and the runoff is the fact that I can only speak for myself and my neighbor and the fact is that we will be totally washed away. They, if you look at the plan, they plan to run the water off and to put it into Moore's Creek right at the entrance, right at the corner of my land, which means that currently I get flooded as it is, but this way it will totally destroy us. It, I don't know if you all have been on Sunset Avenue Extended or not, but it will flood from the entrance of Eagles Landing all the way down to the bridge that connects the city to the county. That road will be completely blocked. So if there's an emergency, that would be no way for people to get in to address that emergency. It also will affect a lot of the residents at Eagles Landing because a lot of the people go at the back entrance and cross the bridge to go up to Jefferson Park Avenue and to the university and other places. So I would hope that before you all decide to approve this and send it up to the order supervisors, that you would consider just what effect that it's going to have on the local residents that already live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak to this? Yes, ma'am.
Unlock your iPhone first. There's nothing called yes ma'am on your calendar.
I'm Betty Saunders.
Hang on a second. That's not for you.
I'm, I'm not a landowner, actually. I'm here representing.
Did you mention your name and?
Betty Saunders.
I was distracted by Siri, thank you.
I'm representing my son who had to be at another meeting. He couldn't be here, but he's on that property since in the 90s and it really didn't flood much back then when he bought it. I have met and talked to the person that was raised there from the 20s in his house. He actually lives down two houses from this project and it wasn't flooding much in the old days. All this new construction forefront and behind my son's home has caused innumerable floods. I mean, I'm sure you all have heard of the destruction of the bridge, the last flood we had a couple so years ago. And it blocks us in. I've asked one night when we knew it was going to flood, if the apartments would let us come through their gate and keep one vehicle on the hillside so that we could get out. That would not. I called for an emergency to get us out another night. We had three dogs and two of us and we couldn't get out. And I told them, you're going to need a canoe or something. And they never came. I called later and they said they couldn't get it down there and they didn't even call us. So I don't know if anybody's noticing the flooding. I've called the county and nobody's really interested. They came forward and cut the water flow down and each one of these subdivisions just caused more flooding because they're, well, for nothing else, when you tear down the trees and the greenery, of course, that right there causes it. But then they use water. I see water standing just before you go into that entrance where that is, there's water standing there where it just doesn't drain right from that housing up above there. Nobody seems to, I recognize it. My son said he attended one of the planning commissions on the one, the first housing development behind him and he asked about it and they, they laughed. We're serious, I don't think he can sell his house. He would like to. It floods terribly. He's in the water up here in his basement. He's really suffered a lot. So I just hope that you give a little extra consideration for the people down there. I mean, we can't even get out when it's, when it's flooded. That road was washed out above his house. Man in the highway department had to come down in his truck in the side of the road to get me to take me out to a doctor's appointment that morning was the only way I got out. So God forbid of something bad happening, we just couldn't get out. I'm hoping it doesn't rain heavy tonight, it's scary. But thank you for listening and I hope you pay attention because he's really concerned and I'm, as a mom, really concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who'd like to speak to this? All right, we'll go to Madam Clerk, is there anyone online?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. So with that, I'll open it up to the applicant and provide an opportunity to respond to what we've heard. Thank you. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you. Just would like to take a moment to respond to the concerns about the stormwater management on the property. So as, as we discussed earlier, the, the intention is to have that, probably an underground retention system in, in that corner of the site there and near the stream. And the idea there that it is certainly designed to handle some very large storm events. It would handle a, store a significant quantity, quantity of runoff. And with modern stormwater requirements, we, we analyze the site for pre-development conditions and ensure that the post-development conditions meet or exceed those so that we have a slower release of water during those large storm events. So it certainly should not make the situation worse. And I believe our intention here, our hope would be that it actually improves the stormwater management in that area by capturing a little more of that runoff at a slower release, also with a cleaner water release of water now.
Great, thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Would anybody like to kick us off?
Well, just maybe, I just want to make a really quick comment, just on the stormwater. I mean, in, in this area, we, we still have, there is a lot of new development, absolutely. But there's also development that happened before stormwater management requirements were in place. And if you realize this, but Interstate 64 doesn't have any stormwater management. You know, that's why Moore's Creek got blown out and we'd had to do that big creek restoration project in Azalea Park. So we, we have legacy stormwater problems that, yeah, we're not there in the 20s and 30s, 40s even, that are, you know, that, that, there's no requirement that VDOT go in and remediate that highway because it pre-existed. So we, we do have some legacy problems. We've got steep slopes in the area, but I have to say, whether this naive or not, I'm counting on this excellent firm to do a great job on the stormwater management. And you also use the progressive technologies like permeable pavement for the parking spaces can mean that that water just drains straight into the ground and does not runoffs and doesn't freeze in the winter, so no slippery driveway. But yeah, it is a challenging site and I feel like they've done the best they could with, with what they have with the, including the comments that we've made that I'm sure they'll take to heart.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I just want to add some more on that note. During my term on the Stormwater Conservation Districts, there is a TMDL for Moore's Creek, a bacterial TMDL that was specifically tied to, you know, a lot of times we, you know, when bacteria in their stream, we don't know where it's coming from. In this case, they went to the length of doing a genetic test and they were able to tell that it came from pet waste.
Sorry, could you just say what a TMDL is?
Oh, sorry. The TMDL is an acronym, it stands for Total Maximum Daily Load. That still probably doesn't tell you very much. Basically what it means is there's a lot of stuff in the stream that should not be there. And this case, the stuff in the stream that should not be there was, was bacteria. And so there's a standard set up by DEQ that is, that says that, you know, you should be able to, your kids should be able to play in a stream, you should be able to fish in a stream. Creatures should be able to live in the screen, live in the stream. And so this, this, this was declared as an impaired waterway based upon their assessment. And so I think it's very important, you know, you know, the comments that made, that were made by the public about managing the, the quantity of stormwater. I'm glad that there's interest here and doing more than just addressing quantity, but also addressing quality. I, I hope in the HOA requirements, they pay close attention to, to pet waste because that is something that, that's already making that stream unhealthy. But. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussions?
Chair, I will, I will just add on the, a bit of information for the school. So the Southern Feeder Elementary School, according to the county school division, is the, the, the school on Founder's Place, which we looked at a couple of months ago, I think you all remember, is to have about 500 additional students there. So that's not just sort of taking care of the problem in the, in the temporary, not they're not temporary, but in the auxiliary classrooms, it's really to be able to add some capacity there. Some of you may remember that this is, I think this is, the schools got pushed to this, not pushed, but walked to this position because they've decided that the Southwood possibility is not going to happen. So this is, this is to take care of that. And so, and in addition to the high school center two, as I mentioned earlier, that's about four to 600 students, additional students a day. And so you really are adding capacity, we're adding capacity. And if you, you know, people will, will, will notice, those who live out in, in White Hall in Crozay, the 33,000 square foot addition there really took care of the elementary school issue there. Now, that may be that the school board needs to do some redistricting. So when that happens, everybody just stay calm and stay cool and don't sort of bring out the, you know, those yardstick rulers because what they're trying to do is balance the, balance student load across the existing systems. Because they said something that was really quite interesting, they have not built a brand new school from ground up in 22 years. Okay? So some of this is catching up, but some of this is also trying, there's a project that's going to be at North Point, I think some of you know where that, that's located at 29, and that will be an elementary school at some point to try and give some, some release to Baylor, Baker Butler at that part of her park. So they're trying, they're trying and they probably would have moved a little bit faster if they had gotten the permission to, to, to put a referendum in about getting a sales tax, but that's a sales tax, but that's another administration.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Arizona, Claiborne?
Just a little bit. All in all, I appreciate a lot of features of this project. The improving the trail system is a wonderful part, maintaining that greenway along Moore's Creek and, and having a bridge that's not big rocks, that'll be cool. I also currently, though, as far as transportation goes, I do currently live in a neighborhood that just has one exit for cars. And I mean, this last summer, and it's a short bit of road at that, last summer they repaved and that's a major problem, major disruption because there's only one way in, one way out. So just to consider whether we really need bollards on that, that 20-foot wide section, should, should people need to be able to get out. It could be an easy change possibly. And then in the bigger picture, I also totally, I want to preface this and say, I totally understand why pedestrian bike only up the Stribling Avenue makes sense. It's a really difficult area to, to build a car connection. When I see this kind of thing, I see like, like old mid-century suburban development where you have to drive three and a half miles to go what should only be like, you know, two thirds of a mile is the crow flies. But I also do understand why that's the case here. But in general, as we proceed, I always want to see like neighborhoods connect to neighborhoods as much as possible. But I think everything else I've got in my notes and stuff I already said before about density, so thanks.
All right, thank you. The only things I'll add in somewhat of a summary method, number one, I think it's a tricky site. And interestingly, you all have owned it for 16 years. We did a rezoning for the Fontaine Research Park in 2010 and we were talking about the Granger Track back then, so I, I can relate to that. I think it's a good plan, I think it is a bit of a shoehorn into a tricky site. I, I think it's, it's great that it in, it helps to move forward paths and greenway systems like we've discussed. I also heard the need to reconsider school modifiers, I think was the term, and, and I think it was really interesting to think about that. That's not on the applicant tonight, but as a county, the reality of the student generation, the students generated by developments, I think is, is something to continue to look at and focus on. A lot of concern on stormwater management, which I think we are probably as a community and lots of communities dealing with past sins to Commissioner Firehawk's point. And I would just underscore the fact that with the ability to potentially go above and beyond and help the community as it is now, hopefully that, that would be something that you all would pursue. And then one just night, sort of nitpick is to modify, would ask that we modify that 150th trigger point for building permits for the construction of the public access. However, that wording needs to be modified, I'm not exactly sure, not looking at it right now, but down to 75, which would be, which would be great. So I'm not sure if that needs to go in the form of a resolution or a condition, not a resolution, but a condition.
Are you suggesting that you would like an additional condition in, in addition to what's being proposed?
Well, I'll be honest, I don't know exactly where that 150th note is. Is that in the application plan?
Yeah, that's correct.
So it would be a request to modify the application plan to replace the 150 with 75.
We're agreeable.
Thank you. All right, with that, do I hear a motion?
Since that one sliver is in Jack Jewett.
I'll make a motion, you can make a second.
As well.
Could you put the motion on the screen now? Forgot my tablet. And, and before I make that motion, Chair, did, did you want to, were you suggesting we should put that 75 unit thing in the?
Yes, please, as a condition.
Motion as a condition? Okay, I'll try. I, I move to recommend approval of ZMA 202300010 for the reasons as stated in the staff report with the additional condition that the.
Application plan.
Application plan.
Be modified.
Modified to add the open space or the trail dedication at unit 75. Does that capture it? I'm not sure.
I want to try that and then we can, I, I would say that it's, it's a slightly different. If I could, just.
Please.
Rather than it replace the 150 with 75 in the application plan as it relates to the trails. That, does that work?
Change the timing of the, the trail dedication to occur after the construction of unit 75 rather than 150.
At a minimum.
Yeah, intent is clear. Are you happy enough with the language provided?
I, I had thought that Commissioner Firehawk's motion was, was clear to begin with, so.
Well, thank you. So I submit my original motion.
A second.
Any further discussion? All right, could we have the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Bivins.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Carizana.
Hi.
Miss Firehawk.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. All right, we are ready to move on to the second public hearing item.
Can we possibly take a five-minute break?
Sure, after a five-minute break. So we'll see everybody back here at we will recess until, what is that, seven thirty-six?
You got it.
Great, thank you. Welcome back, everyone. We are reconvening and I would like to begin prior to beginning the discussion about ZMA twenty twenty-four dash two, like to read a quick statement. This is a statement of State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, and I am a member of the following group, the members of which are affected by the transaction. The group consists of three or more persons whose employer owns property along the Route twenty-nine North corridor. That said, I am able to participate in this transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest. And with that, I will ask the staff report for ZMA twenty twenty-four dash two and SP twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, Brianna Futures.
Thank you, and thank you for taking a break so we could do the set change between staff. It's always helpful. I'm Bill Fertz with the Community Development Office and we're doing the presentation today for the rezoning and the special use permit. I'm doing that presentation combined. Just to let you know what we've got before you, this is, application has two parts. The rezoning is a proposal to rezone one hundred and seventy-two of the four hundred and sixty-two acres owned by the county from RA, Rural Areas, and PRD, Planned Residential Development, to LI, Light Industry. And from now on, I'm just going to use the RA, PRD, LI. The special use permit would allow offices and newly constructed buildings. This image shows the character of the area along with the area owned by the county. The area owned by the county is the orange line. The area to be rezoned is highlighted in blue. This image is oriented with east at the top. As you can see, the rural areas to the north and east are typical of the rural areas of the county with a mixture of open and wooded areas with scattered residential development. The development along Boulder's Road is the Ravanna Station and is a mixture of office buildings. To the west, opposite Route twenty-nine is the Briarwood Development. This image shows the boundaries of the area owned by the county in orange again. The area proposed to, to be rezoned includes areas shown, that currently zone PRD, that's shown in green and RA, which is shown in white. I've overlaid the area that's proposed to be rezoned here. Access to the site is currently obtained from Boulder's Road, which intersects Route twenty-nine as a signalized intersection. As can be seen from this image, the rezoning effectively consumes all of the development potential from the PRD. A proffer is proposed to limit traffic generated to five thousand vehicle trips. This traffic volume is consistent with what would be anticipated from the PRD and the area recommended for residential, office, industrial, and limited commercial development in the comprehensive plan. BDOT has not recommended any transportation improvements. One thing I'd like to note real quick is that rezonings may be initiated in two ways. The county may initiate a rezoning or a request can be made by the property owner. Only during a property owner initiated rezoning can proffers be accepted. By submitting as a property owner, the county submitted this as a property owner. By submitting as a property owner, it was possible to have this proffer to limit the traffic volumes. As mentioned in the last slide, some of the area currently zoned RA is recommended for residential, office, industrial, and limited commercial development. Has a lot of overlap, a lot of comp plan designations. The boundaries of the comprehensive plan are general in nature, except where they follow physical boundaries such as roads or watercourses. Staff has reviewed the, the comprehensive plan and the board's past action to extend water and sewer service. And those of you is of the opinion that the area proposed for rezoning is consistent with the boundaries of the plan. There are two small areas that are outside the development area boundaries. And these areas of boundaries follow the edges of two lakes. However, the property lines go through those lakes. I've highlighted both those areas here. I had to exaggerate the size with these circles so that you, you can see them. They're pretty small. No development may occur in these areas due to existing regulations. Therefore, we find no conflict with the comprehensive plan. These applications, the rezoning and the special use permit, were reviewed for consistency with the criteria for rezoning considerations and the special use permit review criteria. The staff report has comments for all the review criteria, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the staff findings. I'm not going to go over all the findings, but I would like to point out that part of the review that focuses on the comprehensive plan. As shown in the previous slide, a majority of the area proposed for rezoning is not shown for office, industrial, or commercial development in the land use recommendations in the comprehensive plan. The area is shown for residential use. However, the economic development portion of the plan has comments about supporting target industries. The county's purchase of this property facilitates economic development of defense and security industries. These are target industries. The plan also directly addresses Ravanna Station and noting its importance and the importance of supporting this facility. The comprehensive plan is divided in chapters, and the plan states that the order of the chapters is intentional. The economic, economic development chapter precedes the land use chapter. Based on the ordering of the chapters, it is the opinion of staff that this rezoning supports the Ravanna Station and target industries. Allows for a finding that the proposed rezoning and special use permit are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning application and the acceptance of the proposed proffer. And staff recommends approval of the special use permit. No conditions were identified as necessary for the special use permit due to the proposed proffer. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you, Bill. Any questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Firehawk, we'll start at your end.
I have a, I might, might be oversimpl. So looking at your, the map of where you're proposing the rezoning portion of the purchase of the land owned within that orange boundary. I guess my, I guess my question is then what? You want to rezone some of it, then I guess I'm just like, what's happening to the rest of it? Is it just a buffer? It's because it looks undeveloped now.
So, uh, this, this area was identified for the rezoning. I'll let the, I'll let the applicant speak. They are technically the applicant. One of the things that the boundaries do, and one of the things that alleviated the need for having to have address buffers, for example, in a proffer, is it actually doesn't go all the way to the property line. So there's, so there's RA land that effectively serves as a buffer between the, uh, the area proposed for LI and adjoining residential, or excuse me, rural lands, not even residential. But I'll have the applicant address why they, they limited the scope of the area.
Okay, so, and maybe this is also for the applicant. But like I see, it looks like existing farmland or at least cleared land. It must be being farmed because land would naturally regrow with trees if it wasn't being used in some way.
It, it had been farmed. They've re, they've, they've planted it in, in ground cover, which has taken off fabulously well, I might add.
Okay, so, so, so there's not necessarily active use of everything else in this orange boundary.
Correct. Oh, and the applicant can speak more to that, but correct. There, it's, 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 it's vacant land. There's, there's some outbuildings that are there that aren't being used for anything. There was a house on the property which has been boarded up, is no longer being used. It's in pretty poor condition, but there's, there's no use being made other than a small portion thirty-three fourteen, thirty-three one D, that area, there's a parking lot that serves Ravanna Station. But other than that, property's not, not being used or actively being used for anything.
Okay, and then, um, I, I know this is our county's application and then we have to review it and then it goes to the board. I, someone commented to me yesterday that they had thought there would be more proffers coming with this. And that they were surprised that they were not. And so I guess I'm just here, I don't know that that needs to be addressed now, but it's, I know it's our application almost to ourselves, but
Proffers are in, are intended to overcome a deficit in the application. The only deficit that we identified in the application was the need to keep the traffic volumes to a point that did not affect.
Main impact the traffic.
The things such as setbacks, building heights, lighting, the path system that'll go through there. There's a discussion about that in the staff report that we can require through the site plan regulations, the trails that would provide the, the trail network that's proposed in the, in the comprehensive plan. All those things are already ordinance regulations, so we didn't identify any, any, anything that was needed.
Impact. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carizana, any questions?
No questions for staff.
All right, Mr. Claiborne?
No questions for staff.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, so, sort of along the lines of what Karen was saying. I know, I understand your point about proffers, but, but I wonder too, because the county owns this property. Can, can the county not establish conditions to sort of as a measure of staying, you know, of showing that it's going to go above and beyond the minimums that it would, you know, as a good citizen. So, you know, we have, you know, when a private developer comes before us, we, we have certain minimum standards that we ask them to adhere to. And I think it'd be a great thing if the county could show that, that it sets the bar higher. And so by putting those in proffers, I mean, couldn't that be a way of maybe showing that, that we are setting the bar higher?
As, as a reviewer of this application, I would defer that, an answer to that to, to others.
Others. Who would the others be?
The, the applicant, yes.
Pardon me?
The, the applicant in this case.
All right, got you.
The other.
I didn't, I didn't see the look. I wasn't sure. Mr. Bivins?
So just, just to push this piece of spaghetti a little bit more. So, so the proffer here is that the applicant agrees to limit the amount of buildings that can be put on the site and within the, within the pink area so that you don't reach some sort of traffic, so you don't breach a traffic threshold.
What was done, we used traffic count as opposed to square footage. And because that, that's what actually triggers the improvement. So you could have a building that is very large, but generates a small amount of traffic. So that's why there's, that's why there's no discussion of number of buildings, size. It's, it's a traffic count.
And so we're, 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 we're to then expect that Boulder Drive should be able to handle whatever, so we don't need another traffic.
Correct.
We don't need another way in, another way out of there. Even though at the end of the day, at four-thirty, it's a painful part of the county to have to drive through. But that's another issue. And, and then will there be any, any changes to the to the road that connects to Watts Passage?
So during the site plan review process, we're going to have to look at that access. We can, and, and as part of the site plan process, the number, location, and design of the entrances can be, can be set by the county during the review process. And obviously having this trap, volume of traffic go out on a loss passage would, would not be appropriate. So we would not approve an entrance over there. We may approve an emergency access.
Okay, good. That, that was where I was hoping, that I was hoping you would go. But it's not going to be a no, but it may be an emergency access.
Don't, don't know. That'll be part of the site, the site review process, working with fire rescue and, and others.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
I don't have any questions for staff right now.
Okay, I have a, a couple of questions. So thinking about kind of the process that we just went through with our last application, and I realize each application stands on its own, but thinking about the county, thinking about the development community and how many applications we see here. Can you explain a little bit as to why a lot of the specifics of this application are being pushed to the site plan review process? And are not being included in, for example, a, an application plan that might provide more detail on pathways, setbacks, stream, protection, et cetera, that we might normally seen in a, a normal zoning application.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, part of what is going on here, uh, we are working to try and get this site prepared. The applicant comes up and talks to you. We talked a lot about how we're trying to move up a tiers in the state's economic development strategy. And a lot of this is about getting the property zone correctly gathered from funding so that we can then move forward with completing the, the master planning of the site. So it's kind of a stepwise to get us to level two in the statewide system to three and then up to four. I think staff would also say that we are technically following the process, but it is an expedited process in part because there's been a lot of consideration on the board about the property and the decision to purchase the property and the public hearings over that, as well as there'll be lots of other public hearings and other decisions made publicly about the actual development of this property as it, as it moves to conclusion.
Got it. And the reason I ask questions is because a lot of the questions we received from the rest of the commissioners was really more about the detail that we would normally see on a zoning application or on some form of a plan like this. And it's just not there, right? I think we've seen some of it in some of the economic development Brianna Futures documents, but I think we'll leave that to the applicant. Yes, sir.
So it's two things if I can concern, I just have you concerned, confirm something, Mr. Moore. So when a building, when you, assuming this is a partnership where the county is, is, is going to be a a private partner, a private public partnership where the, the county will bring the land to the deal and then somebody else will bring a building. When the person brings a building, will that ever come before this body again? Or will that just go on through the site review? When a, when, when whatever structures are going to be built on this piece of property, when it's decided who you, who the county's going to partner with, will those come before us or will they just go through the, the normal site review process? I appreciate the question and I love that. I think maybe the best to let Mr. Henry address a lot of that. I'd like to tip off the applicant. The other thing that I, I like, as part of how I do, I give the applicant the, the questions so that they know what I'm going to ask. The other thing is, remember when the University of Foundation, the University of Virginia Foundation came to us about the three hundred odd, some odd houses that they're going to build on that piece of property there? They were very sort of specific about, about what they would contribute to the improvements, given the number of houses there. That's only like a half a mile down the road. And so I'm wondering, as we think about our proffer, I wouldn't want the county to find itself in a situation where it has a very, it has an excellent opportunity. But because we've proffered it in this sort of cliff manner, that we won't, we can't, we can't appreciate that. But that in fact, we would think about putting something with some, with some flexibility in it, much like the University Foundation did. To say that if we get this number of people here and these number, and this number of people bring trapping, excuse me, bring this number of traffic or whatever it's called, yeah, traffic here, that then will contribute to this. I'm not expecting the county to contribute, but that there's a bit more flexibility in what you're allowed to do with that piece of property as opposed to saying, we're never going to have more, more trips than this. You know, that's my proffer. I'm never going to have any more trips to that. But to give yourselves a bit more flexibility in that proffer, like the, like the University Foundation provided itself.
Any other questions from the commission?
Just, just a comment. I mean, back to Commissioner Bivins. It's, it would be my understanding that, you know, they get the, the change in the zoning that they want and then it becomes by right. We wouldn't see that unless, unless you want to call something up, which we have the right to do, but then we don't change the outcome. We just look at it. And, and you know, it's by right. So as long as they follow the rules, they follow the rules.
All right, yes, sir.
Well, to say, I mean, this would be the opportunity to take a look at that in more detail, but we don't, haven't been given that opportunity.
All right, thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing and also ask the applicant's report. Thank you.
Chair, Missile, members of the commission, it's pleasure to be here. Trevor Henry, Deputy County Executive, JT Newberry, Deputy Director of Economic Development. First time I've been in front of a board or commission where I've been on a clock. So I am I gotta, I'll be paying attention to that. JT and I have a handful of slides. We appreciate the work from community development staff to bring this forward. We hope to answer the questions that have been raised, and if not, we certainly, there's an opportunity to, within the, the question and answer time. I'm gonna start at a, at a little higher level quickly to, to then, you know, bring us in to the, to the land use that's in question today. I really do appreciate the opportunity to present. Almost a year ago to the day, or within two weeks, May twenty fourth, the board announced the acceptance of this of, of a contract to purchase four hundred and sixty-two acres around Rivanna Station. I came in front of the board on October twenty-fourth and presented, you know, at some depth, the background, the what and the why and, and a little bit of the how. And so I won't get into all that today. But I do wanna just note that, you know, this, this is a continuation of that work. Elmore County has been home to Rivanna Station since nineteen ninety-seven. US Army bought this property along what is now Boulders Road. Rivanna Station is a microcosm of the intelligence community. National Ground Intelligence Center was the original mission house there. Following that was National Geospatial Intelligence Agency, NGA, and DIA, Defense Intelligence Agency. Altogether, the federal government has invested about almost three hundred and fifteen million dollars into the site. And if you drive up there now, you see an addition still underway. Rivanna Station has about three thousand employees on this seventy-five acres of secured land. And, and the work that they do, some of the most important work for national defense. It's a quiet, quiet industry in the northern part of the county, but is one that is, that is significant to, to national defense. But also it is the, the kind of the anchor of one, of nearly one point three billion dollars gener- billion dollars generated annually in, around defense. Fifty percent of that is attributed directly to Rivanna Station. So this is, this is important for us to pay attention to and it's, it's something our board has paid attention to for a long time. I'm gonna drill out to a bird's eye view just quickly. I, I apologize. I, we, we always think north is to the top. So we're oriented differently than Mr. Fritz. I apologize. But I just wanted to show kind of with, with the cursor, the, the red is the seventy-five acres of the existing Rivanna Station. It is a sub installation of Fort Belvoir. Fort Belvoir is in Northern Virginia and that is the owner. It is a fenced and secured site. There's a little rectangle area. This building is referred to as Boulders One. It's a commercial building that has been leased for, for a couple of decades for support of the functions at Rivanna Station. And so that is, that, that work is continued. Our property is all the property that is, that is highlighted in the, in the white boundary with the yellow being the, the development area. And just noting, the total acquisition was four hundred and sixty-two acres. Half of that was development area and the yellow, and we're looking to rezone just one seventy-two of that. So some of the intention of this is, you know, this area has been, has been flagged for a couple of decades as the only base installation in the state that had available property around it. And, and that was both a positive and a concern. Positive is that there was opportunities for expansion. A concern is what we're seeing nationally is encroachment. We're seeing bad actors buying land in and around our military bases that is affecting the operations. And so that, that has been known and communicated as a concern really for a couple of decades. County stepped in last year to help solve that concern and really to help retain the, the functions that are there, as well as we believe this, there is great growth opportunity. This is just a timeline. You know, this has been a very public process. We, you know, we announced it by the board on May the twenty-fourth. All these have been board meetings. I, I flagged the, the planning commission meeting, EDA meetings. We've had public hearings, you know, bringing us forward to, to the rezoning work that we're doing now. So it's, this has been a, you know, a, a pretty intensive effort, both in the public side and then significant effort on the, on the staff side in our meetings. County acquired the land formally on December fifteenth. And just noting with that acquisition, we also, as property owners, our landlords, we, we received contracts to maintain the existing parking and we get some revenues as part of that. Just a few more slides on my end. The June public hearing was noteworthy. That is when the board really signaled their, their intention by approving a resolution to allow business and industrial development. That really set the stage for the need to be resent, to, to do that rezoning work. Had we stayed just as a public uses, then we would not need, have needed to do this. So that really is what drove the action for the rezoning that we're at today. We did significant due diligence. I'm not gonna draw into all of that, but we had to make sure that the property was, was what we thought it was for the investment that, that we were, that the, the public taxpayer dollars were, were investing. And so we wanted to make sure that, that we did our homework on that. And we moved forward with a recommendation to the board in December to move forward. So, so since December, our focus has been on site readiness and engagement. Engagement, I'm not gonna talk about in detail, but it's at the state and federal level. And it's, it's really developing that partnership on what, what this future might look like, what, what we might develop this. In parallel, we have been working internally with staff to, to, to then get the site ready, to do the rezoning. The rezoning will then open us up for, for funding of ability to do more detailed design work, to do things like a TIA. One of the things that, that the county executive and I have heard multiple times from Fort Belvoir, the, the parent, is how important that road connection is. Getting Boulders connected back to, to twenty-nine to add resiliency and some security to the base. That, you know, we estimate that is about a forty million plus dollar project. And so the design on that gets us to be able to access potential funding sources, both at the state and the federal level. Site control was key to, to enable the, the board to have a surety about the current operations and then get us to the table with our partners and being able to move forward with the work that we feel is important to help support and grow to grow that, that area. We have three minutes left, JT. And I told you it would only take me four, so I'm sorry. And I'm gonna hand it over to him. You got this.
Thanks, thanks Trevor. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, JT Newberry with the Economic Development Office. I wanted to start talking about site readiness just by giving a broad overview of the five-tier system that the state uses to categorize site readiness. So starting down at tier one, those are properties that are designated in a community's comp plan for growth. But there's really minimal to no infrastructure, no information about how developable that property actually is. That would be a tier one. That goes all the way up to a tier five, which is a shovel-ready project. That's a property that has site plans approved, permits in place, and end user has a very high level of confidence that in pursuing that property for their use, they'll be able to conduct it with, with minimal risk. So taking that context and transferring it then to Rivanna Futures, we would estimate that the county's holdings hit probably about a tier two level. It's in our comp plan for growth. We've done some of that initial due diligence. We have site control. But if the, if the Board of Supervisors approves a rezoning, that would get us to that tier three level. And as Mr. Barnes and Mr. Henry have alluded to, that would make us competitive for grant funding at the state and federal level. So the purpose of this rezoning is really to put us in a position where we can be competitive, to pursue funding, to do this additional due diligence that will provide the kind of information that you alluded to after the, the staff presentation. So I'll just quickly say, I'm getting to about a minute left here. The best practice is to get to a tier four level of site readiness. And that would, that would be our goal. That's considered a best practice to where you're still giving flexibility to the end user, but you've provided, you've done enough due diligence that there's a minimal risk to the end user ultimately using it for their purposes. So as Trevor mentioned, we're, we're continuing two lines of effort simultaneously. One is a conceptual engineering effort that gives us some of that technical information around the extension of Boulders Road, stormwater infrastructure, utilities like water and sewer. We'll use that to inform a future campus planning effort that will, will engage with various stakeholders. So I've already mentioned that this puts us in a position for, for funding. We believe that light industry uses and the special use permit will allow us to pursue compatible development adjacent to Rivanna Station that won't conflict with any of the existing things at Rivanna Station. And with that, we'll take any questions that you have.
Great timing. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. With that, I'll open it up for questions from the commission. I'll start with Mr. Moore.
Uh, don't have any right now. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Bivens?
Question, Chair, and to the applicant is, is my comment about the proffer. So it's not to pinch yourself. It's not to have something that's a cliff, since you're going for tier four, which could be something, and given what goes on there and what the future might be for intelligence gathering, things like that, that we, that we at least provide you with some flexibility that's not tied to some sort of, to a traffic volume that's today, that is not necessarily flexible enough for tomorrow.
Mr. Moore? Sorry, Mur.
Yes, so we, we've had other situations in Virginia. And I, I mentioned the situation in Chesterfield where they had their economic development authority play a role in a solar acquisition that impacted a, a site that was of state importance and containing multiple endangered species. We don't wanna be that county. There's also areas in, in Virginia, we, where we know that the military's impact on those sites has, has left a legacy of toxic waste. For example, the Radford Arsenal. I don't think that's gonna be a problem here, given, you know, we're talking about mainly office type uses and that sort of thing. But I think it's still something that needs to be on the county's radar in terms of making sure that that's not something that, that we end up with. When people have talked about, we, we don't have a site plan here. We don't have the normal things that we would have when we're approving a rezoning. And, you know, you've heard us speak just recently about the importance of stormwater, the importance of, you know, stream buffers and critical slopes and all the things that have helped make our environmental protection in the county really stand, stand above a lot of other counties. We don't have those details here tonight. But I would encourage you to find ways of, of demonstrating to the public and setting those standards out front so that we can show that we're going above and beyond and setting an example. So that when we do have private developers come before the planning committee, then they say, well, we should at least, you know, we can set an example for what they can do in terms of like doing above and beyond. You know, just as the University of Virginia, as many ways, set an example in terms of a lot of the things that is done in terms of, you know, quality stormwater management and environmental protection. So.
Can I turn your comments into a question? Cause I, I had a very similar line. And, and this would be asking you gentlemen to provide, in lieu of not having an application plan or detail, could you provide a little bit of narrative? And you can say that's an unfair question. It's too early. We don't know. But a little bit of, just to help us sort of understand what we're not seeing, a, a bit of a narrative on, for example, anticipated building layouts and density, road networks and thoughts on that, stormwater issues, natural resource preservation, build out projections and timelines, those types of things, just to give us a little bit of help. Thank you.
I think we can answer some of those. I, I just advanced a slide, kind of the, the, the ending slide, which is questions. This looks like a plan that has been fully designed out. Right? And what it is, it's a three D rendering of what we refer to as the art of the possible. This was, this was engagement work that was done, sponsored out of the state back in the twenty fourteen timeframe with, with key partners at Rivanna Station, Fort Belvoir, North Fork Foundation were the supervisors. They talked about Rivanna Station, its current function. They did a SWAT analysis. And out of that came, came this, this concept, which was a campus plan. And, and, and what the county has done, has taken that plan and has kind of built out like what this could look like. And so that, that's as far as the work has gone, as far as the detail. I, I think what is firm is that Boulders Road connection. We know that is very important to the resiliency of, of the station. And I think that that is also, will be good for the community. And then, and then our development will really focus in around this, this initial fifty to seventy-five acres. The, the building layout, parking, that, that is work that, that, you know, is in the future. And it's gonna be driven based on some of the requirements that we are, we are quietly working on with our partners to see what that might look like. There is some potential of, you know, you know, adding additional gate security and having different access for the existing station now. So that, that work is coming, but, but it is also, you know, it's, it's kind of a parallel path. We, we are looking to get state-supported funding to help us further the, you know, the technical design, especially around the road and, and, and the inner impacts. And then also have a better sense of, of needs from our DOD side and with our academic partners. We've, we've met with foundation, with UVA, with Virginia Tech. This, 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 this camp, campus concept, you know, brings, brings, you know, secure side of DOD with, with academia and private sector in a way that has had success in other parts of the country. St. Louis is a model that we've, that we have followed, that, that we have some belief in. But, but that's, that's visionary stuff. You know, we, we have work to do to get to that. And Mr. Missel, I'm sorry if I, I don't have all those answers yet, but, but that's, that's, you know, that's our intention. I think that's the board's intention and part of why, you know, why they, they pulled the trigger on this acquisition.
And just, and just to be clear, and I'm, you know, speaking for myself here, I'm fully supportive of this initiative for sure. I just wanna make sure as this body that, you know, is overseeing land use.
Yes, sir.
That we're representing as, as fairly as possible and holding ourselves to the same level that we expect other developers to be held to. So thank you.
Are you good? Kind of heard there was one other question, but it, I, I'll come back to it. Okay. Clever?
Uh, no, it looks like a great opportunity. It's had one question, one comment. Cause you talk at a very high level, like the economic development vision as it relates to like North Fork and this site, how they complement each other. Or I remember we had a presentation not long ago on the other site. If you could talk a little bit about that and desired outcomes.
That, you know, the meetings I've had with, with economic development from UVA, the, the term that, that, that I believe in is that a rising tide raises all boats. And so we believe that there is growth needs in our intelligence community from a defense budget. That is, that is the area of, of biggest growth. And, and quite frankly, because that's where the biggest threats are. And so we believe at a federal level funding is, 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 is driving, you know, the, this work. We believe we have a location between Rivanna Station as the anchor, the, the property that we have acquired, that surrounds it, that we're hoping to, to move through rezoning. The work that the foundation has done already that is built and what, what is, what is in their, their rezoning that, that, that together it will create an opportunity to continue to attract this kind of work and these kinds of jobs. It's kind of growth that we think that our board supports. And it is, you know, it is, I've heard the term clean. I'm getting into the economic development world, JT. You can step in anytime you want on this one. But it, but it is, it is in alignment with, I think, the kind of, 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 of growth that we would want in the, in the technology sectors that we, that we would want.
Uh, thank you. And then, uh, the only comment I have is very rarely.
I will say too, our focus really is, is, you know, our engagement has started with the federal DOD side. And we're spending a lot of energy, you know, in, in that world right now. And, and, you know, and we'll just continue to do that.
Got you. Very helpful. Thank you for sharing that. And I guess my comment is very rarely we have a chance to control our own destiny. Like very rarely is the county, the, the landowner that comes before us. And so as we are looking to bring fruition, where there's different projects or buildings or whatever it may be, that we kind of set the standard for what we want in terms of, you know, climate and equity. And I think it's, it'd be a missed opportunity if we didn't do that. So we, we have a chance to control our own destiny here. So.
Great news is there is a lot of federal funding in the resiliency world. Around bases and installations. I, I was at a conference in, in March. There's funding around solar panels to, to provide alternate power backup to bases and installations. I think, you know, not, not saying we're gonna do that, but just saying those, those kinds of opportunities of, of funding, I think, are out there. And certainly, we would be in, interested in, in building to that level of, of design. Or, thank you.
So.
Okay, go for it. Nope, you're good.
All right, so, so one of the things too is, is I wonder about if there's an opportunity here that you've thought about of providing, because you will have military people there, that, that many of them may have had experiences where there may be PTSD or other things that they've had, you know, other challenges that they've, they've had to deal with in their lives. If we've thought about the, the opportunity for services that could also be located there, that could, that could benefit from that site, particularly, you know, making sure that there's a easy access to medical clinics and, and other services that would be, be valuable.
You, you hit on, on an area that when we have done the SWAT analysis over the past, you know, interval of time via the state, what what the folks that work there have talked about is, you know, childcare access, medical access, they they are a sub-installation, so they don't have the amenities that, you know, if you go down to Norfolk or up to Fort Belvoir, you know, that that's a big city. And so I I think there's an opportunity through this development and and working with Fort Belvoir and others to to look at this. I pulled this image up because I thought you were going in a different direction, sir, but I wanted to just, you know, note that, JT, how I do that. Oh, there we go, yeah, thank you. You know, the the area to the east, although there is some development area there, we look at that really as just standoff distance, it's it's, you know, preventing encroachment. But 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 going out there, it is incredibly beautiful property. And so there are, there are opportunities for us to do, what what's the term, what kind of park? Not a, not a, like a typical public park, but it's 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 like a natural area, it's it's geared for military veterans with PTSD, public, anyone kind of in that PTSD, just quiet, serene, like, that's an area that we want to investigate, and there's funding, again, for that kind of work, too. I I think that that would be considered compatible to the to the existing Ryvanna Station, but also an amenity for, you know, the the folks that work work there or or could access that. Does that answer your question?
It it does, and there's been some work on therapeutic forest, is what I think you're thinking about. And then I think also that would that'd help provide a sentinel landscape to help help provide protection to and security to to the site.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Karazana, Commissioner Bivens will come back.
Thank you for jumping to that illustrative, actually, if you can put that up there again, if you don't mind, your illustrative 3D plan that you were showing a little while ago. Yes, right. And I believe you shared this and and some more information when you came before us in in last year in 2023. So I guess my question goes to a lot of what we we've been asking here, and we, you had some information, you certainly had enough information to create a concept map. We know that these change, and they change as developers, sometimes they they sell after they get rezoning and so forth. I'm just wondering why that wasn't included, and why didn't we have some of the overlays that we would typically have in terms of, you know, stream buffers and and critical slopes and so forth. So, yeah, that's the basic question of why we felt that that was not needed, and perhaps is a growing question between the staff and and why it wasn't needed for this presentation when we required or require of of other applicants.
I would just say it's not questioning that it was not needed, it's just we are not at that point of design or development to to offer that. We we took what was an art of the possible, you know, 2D concept, and we actually kind of have an image, if JT can help me, and JT, you're welcome to talk up here, not just me, too. Just saying, end slideshow, sorry. I want to go down, yeah. I've got to unhide that. I'm I'm getting to to the answer. So so the image on the left, so that that, you know, the state has has run what what they call listening sessions, and they do it about every four or five years. And and that's what has has developed kind of, you know, the opportunities and the concepts. The image on the left is is really the image that was 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 driven out of that that art of the possible concept that we then took and developed that 3D plan. That that has been, we've been able to use that as a vision, but we need to get engagement at the at the partner level to make sure that is what is wanted. And so until we do that, we're not able to, I think, provide that level of detail that you're asking for. It's kind of a chicken and egg, too. We need, when when we presented to the board, you know, through through the many iterations, you know, we said one of the first things we were going to have to do is rezoned to get to get it consistent, right? You know, you saw this the slide, Mr. Fritz showed it, it's chock-a-block kind of rezoning within the development area, just for us to be able to 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 do grant access. We had to have a consistent zoning for that. And so the board really directed us, you know, in December, to move at best speed to to kind of get the site ready for this work and to do our partner engagement, and we are just trying to continue that mission. So so the image on the left is what we built that, you know, that that 3D model to just show kind of what the concept could be. We're we're in the process of wanting to validate that. JT?
And I think the only thing I would add, part of the materials that our consulting engineer provided for the the staff report builds off of this this old vision. So the the area that is, if I can, the area that shows the expansion and in our 3D image, that's about 600,000 square feet of development, and the our engineer, the way we got to the 5,000 vehicle trips per day is based on the ITE assumptions for square footage for office and warehouse. And so it relies on this diagram to get to that proffer for 5,000 vehicle trips. So essentially, if we were, if we were to call this vision, if it ultimately became a Phase 1, the proffer that we've provided would accommodate the the vision, this vision here in terms of traffic impact.
Yeah, the the first portion of it.
Yes.
Yeah. And again, maybe this is a comment for staff, but certainly we would, we would ask other applicants to provide much more information than we're getting with this one. So I do think there is an inconsistency here that's probably not lost in many. And so, you know, that's that's just something that personally, I'm for this, I understand that the importance of this from an economic development standpoint, the mechanism on how we're bringing it forward leaves much to be desired. I keep hearing above and beyond, but this isn't even equal to what we typically see. So I'm struggling with the process of how we're bringing it here, not with, you know, what's actually being proposed.
Thanks. Profara?
Yeah, plus one on that comment, and also to Commissioner Murray's earlier comments as well. And I just want to say really briefly that the whole idea, like, above and beyond and doing doing more in the county, serving as an exemplar, since this is really our project. You mentioned that there was a lot of funding in the resiliency world, and you talked about energy efficiency and all that, solar panels, et cetera. I just want to say that I I work in the resiliency arena, that's my career. I work with the Department of Defense, I work with federal military installations and projects that I have going on now. And I would say that they they have a huge green infrastructure focus, and it's not just energy. They, so like, for example, I would have got real excited on your drawing if I saw green rooftops on those buildings, right? Green rooftops can absorb the same amount of water as a forest. And also you can capture and store water, and our county office building has a fabulous green rooftop that I understood saved up to 30% of our energy costs. So I'd just really like to see, maybe when you're proposing this to your partners, that the county sets some standards for resiliency, and then go ahead and go after some of that resiliency funding. There's a, all kinds of memoranda on, there's one here, official, the DOD taking steps for energy and environmental resilience, and they have awarded tens of millions of dollars across the country, and they talk about the fact that they are stewards of species as well. And so I'd really like to see more on that that aspect emphasized, and that as you court partners, that the county develops some almost green standards for this site. That will take more time than what you have right now, but I I, you're working with an entity, DOD has its own green infrastructure person. I mean, they already have, already developed all of these tools, programs, and funding. So you may be able to leverage some of that, because they talk not just about their bases, but also the land surrounding military facilities. So if you spend a little more time articulating that, I think it would also be a little bit more palatable, because it's county as developer now. And so how is the, you know, we have a rain garden right outside this building. I mean, we have done a lot, we put rain gardens in Grozey, we've done green things. But this is our chance to say we're not just going to do development as usual with a bunch of big box buildings and a big wide road. So I'll step down off my soapbox now. But I think that if you get to the right people in DOD, you will be able to leverage some of that funding and some of that expertise and support.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Bivens, did you have a?
Really, a pretty pedestrian question, given that the space that's there. There will be no barracks there of any type, given the direction, that's a question. And if so, then then perhaps we need to be a bit more general in the in what you're coming before us for, if you're actually going to have some housing there.
I I know housing is is a topic that that is, that has come up for the the military side of folks that that are at Ryvanna Station. At this time, there's no plan for for barracks or housing on the property. I just, I mean, that is a concern for for the, you know, the E5 and the E6 that that work on on Ryvanna Station.
And so that's really my, my, you know, I've sort of talked about, give yourself as much room as possible to be, because, you know, our county, the county to the east of us was able to so secure a a business because they had a Tier 4. And so I would like us to have as many Tier 4s so that we can secure businesses and be and be extremely competitive with the surrounding counties, so that we can have some of that economic, so we can sort of be aggressive when we look at that economic development. So that's that's my piece, is like, if there's going to be barracks, please write that in. If there's going to be that, please write that in, because that's how we get to leverage the resources that we have here. If I could ask, there was a, and I don't know if this was just sort of Route 29 sort of ghost tales, but did the county purchase the the little building where there was a woman who was a a?
The Palm Reader?
Palm Reader, yes, the ghost tales.
That is true, yes, sir.
Fine, and so when you had your 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 strategy to action session diagram up there, and you have a, you have a road coming up at the north of the property, is it coming through the, I assumed it was coming through the the ghost tale, the 29? Oh, psychic readings, I can't say psychic.
Yeah, the the county purchased this property, I want to say in the 2016, 2017 timeframe, and it was done so with the idea that that would help gain some level of control of
Over that whole area.
Of that whole area.
Yeah, that's what I figured, because I, you know, again, I'm encouraging, I mean, I'm I'm encouraging, if we're going to use that as a possible exit, please take that to the next, like, next level, because that's where a different level of public scrutiny will come.
Yes, sir.
And so if you need it, declare it, so that people say, well, look, they took down the, what do you call that thing, psychic reading, the ghost light?
It's the psychic readings.
Oh, you take down the psychic?
A Palm Reader's house.
The Palm Reader, you take down the Palm Reader's house, and everybody sort of becomes, you know, they get browned up.
It'll be all over Reddit.
It'll be all over Reddit, we don't need, we don't need that foolishness.
Since you bought it and it's got all those spirits, you definitely have control of the area.
Yeah, yeah, which I'm I'm positive of.
Any other questions? Sir, I just had another question, too. You had the, you have former agricultural land around the edge of, and and have you considered anything like nutrient banking or or carbon credits as a way of producing revenue off that that property while also providing that benefit? Because there's a huge amount of money in nutrient banking and in carbon credit. So you could could actually use that as a way to offset the county's purchase of of this property.
I I have not been involved in those conversations, but that is a great, great concept and idea, and something that we'll we'll take note of, because we we don't intend to, you know, that that area won't be developed, it would be passive use. And so if we could take advantage of it in some way that also, you know, would gain us credit that way, then we should look at it. Thank you.
And it'd be a very positive thing for the locality, too, in the sense that often nutrient credits, when people purchase them, they're purchased from far outside our county.
Yes, sir.
And so the more nutrient banks that we can have locally, the the more we can keep those impact, the mitigation of those impacts local. And so I think that's a, would be a big asset to the county.
Thank you.
Great, so I'll I'll take the floor for just a minute. And first of all, greatest respect for what you all are doing and for the work that's gone into this. I know it's a huge lift. Secondly, I do agree that, you know, a rising tide floats all boats, and I think it would be great for this area to see this thrive. I also am searching for a differentiator that, and I was wrestling with whether to ask this as a question or to go into discussion afterwards, but with what I've heard from other commissioners, I think I'm going to try to phrase it as a question, so bear with me here. So I'm looking at it as as sort of for the differentiator, maybe the differentiator is public funding, the millions of dollars that's being invested in this property. Or maybe the differentiator is, you know, the defense-related mission and national security. But I think we need to, and maybe this is the question, how do we answer the development community that comes to us and says, as a as a county, I have looked at the art of the possible, and I've determined that on this piece of property I have, I will be able to develop this vision. But I'm not really going to be able to figure out the details until after I get my rezoning. And so as a commission, as somebody, as a group that oversees and sees a lot of these different applications, I could foresee an applicant coming forward with that, basing it on the standard that we set as a county. So that, I don't know how to put that in the form of a question, but how, I guess I will. How do we answer that? And if we don't have an answer for it tonight, we should be thinking about it moving forward, because I think we'll be in that position.
It's a great question, I I appreciate how you how you framed that. I do think, you know, there's there's a few different answers to that potentially, or there there's a, there's a series of answers. One, because of the nature of Ryvanna Station and its function, you know, the acquisition was important to help provide some security, right? And 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 take that 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 threat of encroachment off the table. And and that has that has gained great notoriety and traction from a locality for doing that.
Yeah.
Secondly, I think the the type of development that we will need to do will be one that will have to work very carefully with those entities to do the master planning and 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 the future design. And so that, that's not necessarily answering your question, but I think that's that's kind of the circumstances that we find ourselves to to have discussions with with, you know, the partners that that we that we are are going to continue to work with. We we also have to do some level of of design and and concepts as we go. And so that, that's just, that's a process that can take some time. The the thing that I think is a differentiator from, you know, from the developer that who who was here before us, who, you know, does good work, and and you guys had a great, a great session. One thing that I think differentiates the county as being the applicant is is, you know, we have been in the public eye on this for over, for, you know, coming up on a year, come the 24th.
Yeah.
We're going through a rezoning process. Everything that we do, even after, let's fast forward, we we get a site plan, we go through that process, every step of the way the county will take, it takes board approval and action through an appropriation. If 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 we would get to the point of us actually building buildings, we have a capital process of which, you know, for our big capital projects, our board approves, you know, schematic design, anything that we would do in a in a partnership, they would have to approve the terms on all that. So so what, I I do think a differentiator compared to a private developer is, once a private developer has has that site plan approval, they're off and running. You know, Mr. Newberry will be here over the next 20 years, presenting to the board.
Giving him nightmares.
On on this project, I hope so. And that, you know, I'm sorry, I don't mean to get loud, the, you know, the 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 development pipeline on this, we think is is that that 20-year horizon. And so I think the biggest differentiator is that that public oversight that we're going to always have as we continue to do future work.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, appreciate it. Thanks for your presentation, for the answering all the questions. I'll open it up now to comments from the public attending in person who have signed up. The first name on my list is Rob McGinnis. Think you know the drill, Rob.
Good evening, my name is Rob.
Good evening. My name is Rob McGinnis. I'm here representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. I want to start off by stating that it's important to point out that PEC is not opposed to growth of the defense and security sectors in Albemarle County. However, what we are concerned about is the process for advancing Ravana Futures through the real estate transaction entitlement processes. The entitlement process has been significantly truncated, and the county's both applicant and review and reviewer, which can be, but doesn't necessarily mean it would be problematic. But what is really concerning for us is that the proposed initial two phases, and I don't know if you really got that, but there are two phases of development of Ravana Futures appear to be part of a much broader initiative to accommodate future growth with defense and security sectors. I'm going to read you a quote from the final minutes from your October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three Planning Commission meeting. That quote is from the record of the presentation on Ravana Futures as part of AC forty four Economic Development Goals and Objectives. So I'm going to start the quote. Mr. Henry said that they saw potential for development from North Fork all the way up to Green County, approximately eight miles, with a possibility of realizing a level of potential similar to Silicon Valley at its onset. He said that they believe the Ravana Station Futures projects would help anchor that work. He said there was an ecosystem in the community that supported it, end of quote. And there is a sentence in your ZMA packet in that proposal that says it is likely that the county will make additional applications, including rezoning applications in the future to further support Ravana Station and target industries. The meeting minutes and staff report imply a larger initiative with a potential scope of development of virtually unknown to community members. So I get I get these conversations and phone calls. They're like, we don't understand what Ravana Station Futures is, other than this initial project. So there needs to be a better communication of what the intensity and level beyond this, if this is a catalyst, we need to better understand how far this project's going. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on our list, I don't think is here, but it is Wilbert Wingfield. I think he may have spoken on the previous project. Okay, we'll go on to the next one. Mr. Olivier, Tom Olivier.
Good evening. I'm Tom Olivier from the Samuel Miller District. I recently emailed to you a statement on the Ravana Futures project that I presented to the Board of Supervisors before its April project update. In that statement, I questioned the benefit of Ravana Futures to current residents and noted that residents had not seen broad impact analyses of the project. I urged the board to make any existing impact analyses publicly available or hold further commitments to Ravana Futures until such analyses were done. At the end of the supervisor's discussion, the chair noted impact analyses for Ravana Futures were needed and asked the staff to develop some. If these analyses now exist, I haven't seen them. As far as I know, Albemarle County intends to proceed to the approval of Ravana Futures with insufficient information on its fiscal, schools, environmental, and other consequences. Of course, there are other problems with the county processing of Ravana Futures. The fifty eight million dollar purchase of land for the project was hatched and approved in a closed meeting. I know Virginia law allows it. And as the Free Enterprise Forum has noted, the county's review of its own development proposal is moving unusually quickly and with less than usual required information. If this is fine for the county, why is it different for private businesses? The county says it purchased land due to a concern that the federal government might relocate agencies at Ravana Station if the county did not provide additional land for expansion. Consider the precedent. Is the county going to make hasty, large scale decisions anytime the federal government dangles the possibility of relocating its Albemarle installations? Also, county staff have said that a rapid review was needed to qualify for VEDP site development money. Is the county now so seduced by economic development that it will cut corners on review processes for VDP dollars? I urge you to inform the boss that the current Ravana's future review process is substandard, and they should take steps to prevent it from becoming the new normal. Finally, a little different. At what stage in our rise as a national intelligence hub do we anticipate becoming a target of nuclear weapons? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state state your name and general area of residence, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Michael Scott. I live out in the Earlysville area. And the I spoke at the June twenty first Board of Supervisors meeting, which which was held to discuss this exact purpose. And my comments at that time was that I've been a resident in Albemarle County for thirty years. I'm very familiar with this this area and this opportunity. And I said, I thought it was the most forward leaning move that I'd seen the county make in in three decades. So I I commend the folks who move forward with it. I believe that the county's decision that evening to open this up is exactly what this rezoning enables. And that was eleven months ago, so we'd not call that hasty by any stretch of the imagination. I I've read through all the due diligence work that's been done. There's been a ton of work done on all the slope analysis and things like that. I know there's there's more to do before you could build something. But I think you're dealing with a different animal with when you're dealing with the federal government and the state government. And you need to get that level of readiness to get interested investment. As a county resident and are part owner of a fifty eight million dollar bill, I look forward to bringing some of that, those federal and state dollars in as quickly as possible, as I'm sure, you know, you all do as well. My real focus, the night that I spoke last year, sir, gets to your, I think, the heart of your question, and that was that I had asked because I mistakenly at that time thought that the discussion was about the whether or not they should purchase the land. I asked that the at least twenty to twenty five percent of the property be set aside to create a right to referred to as a natural area rejuvenation zone for veterans, military, and first responders. A quiet area where people who don't have ready access to large acreage and 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 quiet space can go clear their mind, heal their mind, work with others in the community who specialize in in healing folks. What a perfect place to do that. The board was and the and the staff have been extremely receptive to that idea, and I look forward to to further developing that. That's outside of the scope of what what we're talking about tonight. But I but I think if I understood your question correctly, that that gets to something that I'm I'm personally passionate about, and I'm glad to hear that it's come up here again tonight. So I would just encourage you to take the next step forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this issue? Being none, is there anyone online?
No, sir.
All right, so I will offer to the applicant the opportunity to come up and address any of the comments you may have heard. And as a reminder, you have five minutes, JT. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Something we could provide a little more information on is this notion of of an innovation corridor. Once the county was publicly under contract to purchase the land, there were a number of people in our community that were interested in partnering with the county on how we could maximize the opportunity. And so one of the a few of the partners that were especially interested were from Green County, which has a defense production overlay zone and also approximately five hundred acres of land that's been designated in in a way that is similar to the form of development that you find at North Fork. They, the Green County is interested in pursuing something like that in the Rutgersville area. So the eight miles of innovation corridor refers to Airport Road to Route thirty three and Rutgersville. And in that, along that corridor between the county's acreage, the University of Virginia Foundation's acreage and the land in Green County, you're looking at about fifteen hundred acres of space that could be intentionally planned for this type of, these types of sectors, this types of, these types of uses. So I hope that provides a little bit more background on it. That was really an aspirational kind of brainstorming discussion, looking at best practices of other corridors that are jointly marketed around the country.
Thank you. All right, thank you both. With that, I will close the public hearing and open it back, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anybody like to kick us off?
I'll kick us off in kind of the big picture and actually kicking off from roofing on on something that some folks, some of y'all, including Christian Missiles, sort of asked earlier. What's the differentiator between this and a private developer asking for a zoning? And and I'm surprised in a way that that was such a question, because to me, the answer is obvious. We don't run government like a business. If anybody ever is running for office and says they're going to run government like a business, they will not get my vote. We run government to provide public goods and public benefits. And I feel like in our country, we've really lost the whole idea of what a public good is, you know? And so to me, this is like, this is a county government, you know, deciding this is what's going to be in the interest of the polity, you know, the the whole public. The site prep is something that county decision makers have decided is a public good. That's security around the existing Ravana Station facilities, preparation of the site for stable and well paying jobs. And it's, yes, the the presenter's proposers noted, it's a public priority that is handled through a public process. Now, we can keep having opinions about whether that's the right industry to target or not, but, you know, that was the decision that was made. So to me, that's the differentiator. What I also like about us being proactive in this way is that it opens the door for future public good pursuits. And we have a lot of those needs that are out there. We don't always have to wait for a private developer seeking private profit to come to us, asking for a rezoning or a SUP or whatever, that we can actually do things for public good. And maybe that's something we can think of more in the future.
Great. If I could, since we're in discussion, I just wanted to mention one thing on that, and and it's it's a good point. I think the challenge is that applicants who come to us with affordable housing initiative requests very much see that as something that is for the public good. And they are not expedited. They oftentimes take years to be approved. So I think the challenge is, and I hear what you're saying, I think the challenge is how do we define public good, and this is not for us to discuss tonight.
I know.
It's a bigger, it's a bigger question, and I do think that there are differentiators that we need to clearly articulate to the public. Because most applicants are going to say, what I'm proposing is for the greater public good. But it's a good.
I'm with you, and I'd love to talk political philosophy more sometime.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Bivens?
So I think everyone's heard my attempt to sort of give the applicant some flexibility so that they can, in fact, do the things that might that might be presented that are not known today. But I'm also going to sort of sort of come along on on what Commissioner Moore is talking to and to remind sort of us generally, and that's a big us, that the supervisors have sort of asked in in time, what is sort of county property? So not this piece, but what's county property that might actually help to advance housing? That might that might help to advance some some type of, some of the other, which I hope for AC forty four, as I I asked when we when we had this conversation before, that we actually have a reevaluation of what our target industries are and for the future. Because what they were are not what they are today, and they certainly aren't going to be what they're going to be tomorrow, so that there be some sort of robust sort of wrestling what it was a target industry. But in any event, what we what we have found out is that if you're going to come to this to this community and try and buy, which and I and everybody knows that I am not the person who thinks that you should be able to buy a house. I think you should all have, you should have housing. But I have not, I I have problems with the 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 situation that's been perpetuated by the GI Bill and all that foolishness. But I do think that the county does have, as a public good, an opportunity to have a diverse workforce. The people up there on twenty nine are going to need people with a diverse workforce. The people that you're bringing over the University Foundation, they're going to need people who have a diverse workforce. And that diversity of workforce means that we have transportation networks, that'll come, that we have housing stock, that'll come. And I think where I'm coming from on this one is that the housing stock could be land or could be swapped with land that the county owns. And so for me, what we're going to be doing at Ravana, at the at the at the Ravana Station and in the Ravana, the Ravana property is is a is an indicator that the county is willing to think about putting a dime in the ground. And I'm hoping that the county is willing to put a dime in the ground for the people who will work in the county. Because if people still have to drive over to Wayansboro or they've dropped the drive to Louisa or those various other places that people drive in, then that will make it more difficult for people to attract businesses to this location. Because businesses are not going to say, I want my folks to drive an hour to come to work. There are other places that they could do that, as lovely and as brilliant as Albemarle County. So the combination of land for people to work on and land and land for people to live on, in my mind, is part of the economic development equation that hopefully our supervisors are thinking about, because it is about economic development. It's about how do we create an environment that is welcoming and open to the whole sweep of people and talents that come to come here. And so if I didn't say it, I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you. Mr. Murray?
So I think because we don't have a concept plan here, and we we've talked about some of the opportunities that are here with this site, I I think that what I'd really like to see is what I'd like to see is a condition on this, that that the county will come up with a with a series of goals for sustainability and equity as part of that will be attached to this project, using the comprehensive plan as its basis. Because we have a lot of great, you know, goals and very specific items in the comprehensive plan. For example, we have recommendation that county facilities should have eighty percent native plants. That that would be a great goal. So I think I I don't understand the difference between a goal and a requirement. I wouldn't want to put requirements on things that would make it, you know, impossible for them to or more difficult for them to develop this in the way they want. But I think at least having a a series of goals for equity and sustainability, I think, would be an asset.
That was almost my plus one. It's just take advantage of this opportunity to be a standard setter, right? We don't have this opportunity often, so just doubling down on that. So thank you.
Yeah. Good, good comments. I'm wrestling with how to do that, but we can think through it. Arizona?
Well, I don't want to repeat what a lot has been said already, and certainly I agree with a lot that's been said. There are some other things that I'm necessarily, I would say, I'm in the, I'm not in the same the same place as some of the commissioners up here. I do think that, you know, whether you're a government entity or whether if we're, if we have certain standards that we uphold for others, then we should certainly follow them. Having said that, you know, we've been using this term differentiator and what makes us different. I do think there was something that the applicant said that, for me, was a differentiator, and that is all of the public processes that they will need to continue to go through. And so that is not the case with with a typical developer. You know, once they get the rezoning, yes, they got to go through their site plan approval, but, you know, and then they they build. So so I think there is, there is, there is something there. Same token as we look to you know, the above and beyond came up several times, and and I do think that we should be holding ourselves to at least, at least the same standards as 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 other applicants. So I still hold to my original thought on this, that it is not quite to the standard that it should should have been. Nonetheless, I am very much in support of what this will do. I agree with my colleagues that there's a lot yet that we don't see, and hopefully there'll be opportunities to see that in the future, whether it's here or through other public processes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fire?
I'm just plus one, everything everyone else said. And again, if we're talking about industries associated with the Department of Defense, we should actually mimic the Department of Defense's new sustainability goals and resilience goals. And I I think staff might And I, I think staff might partake of a tour of NASA Langley's facility at Hampton. They love to give tours and you guys can get out of the office for a day. I can put you in touch with them. So there are federal defense and logistics facilities that have already done a lot of green infrastructure. And so there are precedents. And to develop a set of principles that we want to see, again, you don't have to hamstring yourself. You don't have to say, you know, every parking lot will be permeable pavement or something. But you certainly could create these design principles, almost like, you know, what am I trying to say, form-based code type of idea. And then that, I think you'll still find takers. I think people want to be part of a green campus, not just have another big box that they can put their people in.
Thanks. So I'll, I'll just, while we're still in discussion throughout something, and I don't know if this is acceptable or even if this is measurable, but to the point where we've all, we've all talked about differentiators, I plus one Commissioner Carizana. We've talked about how to be, how to be excellent, right? How to show excellence as the county and how to represent that. Is a statement to the effect of something like, the applicant is committed to establishing goals focused on excellence in areas of land planning, equity, resilience, resource management, and other land use-related considerations. Or something general like that is, it's not a condition, it's a, an aspiration. I don't know if that's.
Chair, I think it would be more helpful to say that the applicant is encouraged.
Yeah. Is encouraged to focus on excellence in areas of land planning, equity, resilience, resource management, and other transportation, and other land-related considerations.
Mr. Chair, as the commission is aware, the petitions before the commission tonight are, there are two petitions, one for rezoning to light industrial and the other for a special use permit. Those are the petitions that are before the commission tonight. I've heard a lot of angst and discussion about the process, but really what's before the commission are these petitions. Have they met all the requirements of the zoning ordinance? Have they addressed all the impacts that are foreseen? Staff indicates that they have. And so if the commission feels that, that there are unaddressed impacts, then that needs to be part of the commission's motion. But to the extent that the commission believes that these petitions have addressed all the impacts to the commission's satisfaction, then I think that the, the motion really ought to be focused on the petitions and whether they're meritorious rather than the process.
So I think the challenge is that I don't know, I don't know whether, and I want to speak for everybody here, but there's, there've been questions as to whether we have the information necessary to be able to make that determination. So I think that's a little bit of what we're wrestling with, or at least what I'm wrestling with.
Exactly. If I can, you know, we've talked about process, but the, according to the applicant, the county, the only impact is traffic. And the, so the proffer is to limit the number of vehicles. And, and we can't evaluate the potential for other impacts because we haven't got enough detail in this plan to evaluate such impacts in order to know what additional conditions we might request. So that's kind of where we're at. We're, we're in a rock and a hard place, so to speak.
Yeah. So I, I don't, I mean, I, I think with the reasons we stated, at least I'm speaking for myself here, but the differentiators we discussed, I'm comfortable with the, with the two items in front of us this evening, right? Two items. I think the question is, is there a method for us to include the, the encouragement of the commission that will then go to the Board of Supervisors to state, we support this, we believe what the staff has presented is acceptable. We just want to, you know, we want to encourage and sort of underscore the desire or the, the recommendation for, for excellence in the areas of land planning.
Might I offer that if the applicant was willing to offer that themselves, that it could just be included as a, a condition offered by the applicant?
Well, again, I don't know if it's a condition. I think it's, it's just, it's just something that we're, it's not a proffer, it's not a condition.
We voted before and just added a, after the vote, we then made a, a statement that we would like to also be forwarded onto the board following our motion, the legal motion. We could do that.
So the applicant is entitled to either a recommendation, either positive or negative, negative recommendation on both of its applications. But if the commission wanted to make additional recommendations in the form of a motion, it certainly could do so.
That's, that's, I think, what we should do. Okay. Okay. If we're done with discussion, would anybody like to make a motion?
I can put the motion forward. All right. So I move to recommend approval, well, hello. I move to recommend approval of zoning map amendment, ZMA 2024 00002, Ravanna Futures. Move to recommend this approval for the reasons stated in the staff report.
Second. Any discussion? All right. They have a vote, please.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
All right. Aye. Okay. Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carizana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
And do, do we have a second?
It's right here.
Oh, you got a second. Here's the second one.
This is the, yeah. That's all right. I move to recommend approval of a special use permit, SP 2024 00014, Ravanna Futures, for the reasons stated in the staff report.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? And the roll, please?
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carizana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye. Thank you.
Going to make the recommendation. Sure, I can do that. Give my best shot. I think we all know exactly what we want to say. It's just kind of making it concise. But I move to recommend that the county take into consideration ways to set the standard, yeah, that's okay. To set the standard to focus on excellence in areas of land planning, equity, resilience, sustainability, features that are listed in the vision and mission of the county and its respective direction, including resource management and transportation and other related considerations. So.
So that was a motion. Second? And can we call the roll, please?
Yes. Sorry. Mr. Moore?
Chair, so what we're doing is, is recommending to, we're recommending to the county that they be aware of the various, the various, the various elements of our, of their strategic plan. Because the things which you mentioned are in the strategic plan, there are elements within the county strategic plan.
Encouraging activation is what I would say. Otherwise, it can be a document sitting on a shelf and that's not what we want. So encouraging activation would be, I think the genesis of the motions are correct, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and working to set a standard
Yeah.
of excellence, if possible.
For this project?
Yes.
Not just any old.
Yeah. So this would be, if it's, if it's approved, this would be the, a statement, an official statement of the planning commission. And let me just anticipate, if you could provide that wording to Carolyn, I'm sure she'd be appreciative.
Yeah.
You can just email me. That'd be great.
Email would be good.
All right. We had a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? And can we call the roll, please?
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carizana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you all. All right. We're moving on to committee reports. Any commissioners have updates?
I do.
All right. I'll use her.
So the CROZACAC met, it's a very interesting presentation about the CROZI fireworks. Learned way more about fireworks than I thought I would. And so, so with a landowner has, actually a local winery owner has, has offered to host the CROZI fireworks. And so they're going to need a, especially, they're going to be coming for us, for a special use permit to, for the number of people that are going to be attending this event. And so there was, you know, talking to the community about the community concerns, a lot of discussion about traffic, people coming to the site and leaving the site. So it was a great, it was a great discussion.
May I raise a question on that? So when CROZI, when Claudia's CROZI Park held the fireworks, they never came before us.
Yeah. So, so that is a great question. So what, what happened was, is that development has encroached further and further towards the park. And so what's happened is, is that the size of the mortars they could use have gotten progressively smaller and smaller and smaller, until finally, with some of the, the most recent developments, they've just gone in, just inside the sphere of where it would, it would be unallowed. So even the smallest mortar they could use would, would be in violation. And so they can't even do that anymore. They talked about having like drone displays or other things, but even that is a very expensive proposition.
You mean because of our restrictions on fireworks in the county or?
No, no, this is fire safety.
But, okay, so there's regulations on fire safety and what size mortar item you can manage.
It's the blast range of the.
That still doesn't come to my original question. So prior to the Parkway and Parkside development, there were fireworks out there. And I've been on the, I've been on the commission long enough to do many Fourth of July seasons. And no one has ever come here to say, can we have, can we have a fireworks in this location? And we even have less oversight on wineries than we did on that piece of where they were going to put the, whatever that exercise community that was going to go over there, where they had to come before us. So we can't even tell wineries to stop serving bad wine. I, I know, I know I'm going to get hit for that, but I don't care.
So, so the special use permit is not for the fireworks. It is for the number of people attending the event.
So if I have a wedding, if I have a high society wedding.
Okay.
Huh?
Can have a high society.
I'm going to have a high society wedding. And we invite half of everybody that I don't know. Would that mean that I'd have to come before the county to get a special permit to have that high society wedding?
So Mr. Bortzabota, Deputy Director of Community Development. So there's a, if you recall, on our wineries, breweries, distilleries, there's a, there's a cap on the number of attendees. So the special permit is to get above the number of attendees.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking.
That makes sense because I didn't know, I, I have to admit, I didn't know there was a cap.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and so, so then the other, the other part of the presentation was from the Ravanna Water and Sewer Authority, who periodically comes and gives a presentation. There is a, there is a lot of interesting conversation. One of the things I learned is, you know, affects my own neighborhood in Sugar Hollow, but there was the bladder failure. I don't know if you had heard that, that occurred. And so there's a.
The dam, you mean?
At the dam, yeah. And so there was, there's flooding that, that went all the way down the, and actually over top to one of the last bridges.
I didn't know that was why.
Yeah, that was why, yeah. And, and so they talked about the, the measures they're taking to prevent that in the future. And so there, there was a, there's a lot of interesting discussion about that. And then just also planning for future capacity and CROZI.
You heard from the, from the hydraulic 29?
Yeah.
I gave you my, my, my meeting notes when I talked about schools.
Thank you. That was helpful. Thanks.
Rio 29 met late April and there's a proposal by City Church, just, just up the hill on Rio from K-Tech. And so they want to build a 13,000 square foot building kind of behind and perpendicular to the main church. It'll be for offices and a gym.
They were, I think, going to be across some grit and pant tops at one point, I thought, but maybe it felt through.
Well, there's a church there now. They're just going to add a gym to it.
But I thought that came to us, um, maybe.
It was a different church.
Oh, it was a different? Okay.
I think it was a different church. Maybe it had the same name.
Maybe in the same area.
Okay.
Great. Is that it, Commissioner Moore?
That's it.
Awesome. Anybody else? I think the fifth and Avon Street CAC was canceled for this month.
Oh, so.
Yeah, it's not, it's not meeting this month.
All right. Thank you. I'll move it over to a review of the Board of Supervisors meeting and then segue directly into AC 44 update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there have been two Board of Supervisors meetings since you guys last met. One on the 24th was related to the budget and there weren't any other items, land use related. The other one was on May 1st. As you recall, there was the application you all dealt with a couple of months ago for the climbing gym off of Old Ivy.
Yeah.
And that was passed by the board. It was actually a very quick meeting. I think we were out before seven that night. Because the only other item on it was a, a public hearing to convey an easement to the service authority across a tract of county-owned land that sort of relates to the Rio Point project off of Rio Road. It's a little bit of land that was left over from rezoning from a long, long time ago for Village Square, when they thought that the John Warner Parkway might go through this little bit of woods that are back behind the Waldorf School. So that went forward fairly smoothly as well.
Great. Thank you.
So as far as AC 44, you know, I've, I scared you guys with, you're going to be here all summer. I want to lock you down. And, you know, psych. But what we've done at the staff level is, I think we've gone back, sort of like reassessed like all the information that we had gathered. And I think one of the biggest things is how do we convey that in a way that is meaningful to somebody who might only be reading a portion of the document? And I've been sort of liking to get to, we, we've been describing the forest of all the trees and, you know, all the details. And what we really need is a section of the thing that really describes that forest from a much higher vantage point. So that's caused us to sort of like tack in a slightly different direction as far as the format of the plans, most of what we're trying to convey. I'm slated to come back to talk to you as well as the board at the beginning of June, give you a little more information on what we're doing. And then I think we're going to be shooting for something in the August, September timeframe to bring you back like that overview to sort of, you know, first part of the chat, the conference plan, the first version of the, that entry section. So that's what we're working on right now.
And that still perceives the action items?
Yeah. You mean all the action steps?
Yeah.
We haven't seen those.
Yeah, no, and we recognize as, you know, part of this is really getting into the, to the meat of the document. And we will probably, it's not completely clear, Fred, we'll be like providing that at the beginning. We've got a lot of that written and whether we'll just bring you the first part or not has completely been decided.
Got it. Okay. All right.
But we.
We're following your lead.
Nitpicky question, if it's okay.
Yeah, of course.
So two comments, a comment and a nitpicky question. The comment is, you know, sometimes when you sit down to write the actions, I do a lot of strategic planning documents. You know, like something sounds good and objective and you start writing the actions, like, wait, we can't figure out how to do this. Or actually this objective doesn't make sense. You know, is that also going on, some of that? Because, you know, when you get into the details or you see all the actions of the whole thing, you're like, my God. Because we were trying to create a, a plan that could be done, right? It could, could, because our current plan that exists has got like too much involved.
Yeah, I think you, you've sort of hit on what we've been wrestling with, right? We've got all the feedback that we had received on the goals and objectives. We've had a whole list of like sort of how those things would actually be implemented, all of that coming from our fellow departments. And, you know, what does it mean to have that strategy? These are the action steps to do that. The intent here is to, you know, and then having that really, having that body of information does very much, I think, going to affect how we're, again, trying to describe the forest. How are we, how are we trying to describe what are the, not only what the goals are for the county, but how do those, how do we implement them and what, and their priority of how we implement them, especially geographically?
Yeah, we're not like doubling the size of the county staff to do all, I mean, yeah, like in your work plans, the practical reality of the timeframe of this plan and. like in your work plans, the practical reality of the timeframe of this plan and what we as a county are promising we could do.
And I, that's, were you in the meeting today? You know, a lot, a lot of what we're talking about is, how do we make this actionable? And how do we start to try and bring, you know, how do we tie this to our work plans that each, you know, department will be working and do it in concert? So that's been, you know, that, that kind of like, how do we get from like a, like a hodgepodge of, of goals and aspirations to something we can actually implement that provides this direction forward? I think is really the aspiration we're trying to bring back to you.
Okay. And then the nitpicky question was really just, in, in reading the original set of goals and strategies, I, as a someone who writes a lot, I, I just wanted to wordsmith stuff. And so that, the, and, you know, the question is, is there a professional editor or somebody? You know, like everyone's writing their stuff, but not everyone is a writer. So is there, is there in this process somewhere where a real editor comes in and structures the sentences and gets rid of phrasing that doesn't make sense or passive voice or all those, so that it's a really readable plan?
I don't think it, you know, this, we've had a, we've had a couple of people who've been really intensive in writing the document, and it's a lot of the work product you've seen, and they probably will continue to be our, our lead on writing this.
All right, so no professional editing is coming? Okay.
Unless you want to hire my wife.
I'll hire you. I don't think you're allowed to. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you.
Any new business? Or old business?
Just one question. Just curious if you all are still discussing in your chair, vice chair meetings with staff, like, are there any groups we ought to be bringing before us to maybe help inform some of our just intel? And when we start to review some of those action steps and so forth? I know we've brought economic development in. Can't remember who else. I'm sure we've had other, yeah, housing, other team members and colleagues on staff. Are there any other departments or groups we could use a briefing from that might help inform our, our dialogue as we start vetting some of those action steps or whatever comes in force next in the comp plan, so?
Unless I'm making it up, I think we talked about resilience at one point. That might be an interesting one. I've heard that a couple of times. I know the university, the city and the county are working together on a resilience plan. Any other ideas? For the, it's a great reminder. Any other ideas?
I mean, in terms of resilience, I believe, as in the nature conservancy has also been doing a lot of work on that as well.
I just know those three entities are working on an actual plan.
In terms of, you know, in terms of biodiversity, I don't, I don't know that the county has ever heard much from the Department of Natural Heritage with, under DCR. It'd be nice to hear about some of their, their work. They do maintain sites of, of state importance in Alamo County. So talking about like the importance of biodiversity and, and what they're doing in terms of their work in Alamo County and, and the sites that, that they, they monitor, that might be interesting.
Any other ideas? Thank you.
It might be, it might be helpful at some point if we had a, a conversation with schools. I know there's a, there's a, there's a, there is a, an interdepartment, an interagency committee that does that, but I, I, I think it would just be helpful because, I, I mean, I really am not, I know everybody thinks I'm snarky, and I am. But, but this whole disconnect between the projects that we look at-
Yeah.
-and the, and the, and the screaming about they're going to put kids, and, and many of those projects are not going to be built in nine years. And so the child will be in college by the time this project gets built. And if we continue, the demographics in this community, if we continue to go on this, in the path that we are, we are more and more going to become a gray community. And so at some point, the schools are, are in the process of thinking about what the school looked like in a, in a, in an era where there are, there are many fewer children who are going to public school. That doesn't mean they're not being educated, but that they're going to public school. Because one of the things we were told last night is that the census in public school is not yet back where it was pre-pandemic. While it is getting closer, but if you look at, if you look at the, the census for homeschooling-
Yeah.
-and you look at the census for the myriad of private schools or independent schools that are here, their census and the homeschool census has increased and is not looking to decrease. And so the whole idea, what does education look like in, in Alamo County?
Great idea.
Yeah, and also that, that equation to measure, we, that comes up in our CAC all the time that Mary, Mary Catherine talked about, that, you know, how do they, and we, we can't really say, all we can say is that's the equation, and that's what the development community is supposed to use. But everybody rolls their eyes at that because it just doesn't comport with their, their lived experience.
I will, I will share that one of the things that, and I'm, I'm on something with this club, I've been on it for a while, but it's not the long term, but it's another thing. They've been very good, they had, until the pandemic, they were really good at the numbers. They're really, really good at, we're going to have this number of students. What they're not very good at, and it's not, and this is not any blame on them, is they don't know the distribution of the students. So I don't know how many are in the southern feeder pan. I don't know how many are in the western feeder pan. But they have been really, really good. This is how many kids we're going to have in the public school system, just not what the distribution of those kids are going to be.
Right, like, because the census tracts don't tell you this subdivision, you don't, it's just a big blob, and it, it's really hard to pinpoint, you know? I want to, I had one other old new business. This is really quick. In the, I know that you are new, sir, and so I didn't want to bring this up on his first week, but I would like to get back to where we have a list of, you know, these are the likely things coming for the next two months. My supervisor's constantly asking me, "When's that coming?" I'm like, "I have no idea, I have no idea." All right? Yeah, the schedule, and it, and it sometimes changes, but it is really helpful to know, like, in two months, that's probably coming, even though it might be, might be like really two months and one week or something.
Schedule is coming to that.
Yeah, let's get, make this get back to-
That's helpful, I mean, I, I can, my computer right now, I can give you a couple of the ones that are like scheduled for the next little bit, but-
I could do it faster.